Work that we've been ongoing for a while. So again, note it is 6 o'clock. The meeting has started and for the record, we do have a quorum. If I could, I'd ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, justice for all.
Mr. Williams, would you be so kind as to lead us in invocation, please?
By our heads. Father, once again, we thank you for allowing us to gather in this place, dear Lord, under one roof, dear Lord. We give you the praise and the glory, dear Lord, for all the blessings you have given us. Dear Lord, we ask that you guide us in our hearts and our minds as we go about the county business, giving us clarity and understanding of all that is presented before us. These and other blessings, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. All right. So a little bit truncated agenda from our normal meeting, since this is a working session. But at this time on our agenda, we do have the public comment period. So if there's anybody who would wish to speak before the planning commission, please stand up now. And if you would, please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Okay. Oh, thank you, Jeff. I am here representing the Rens of the Dogren Railroad Heritage Trail. We have been, and here comes Kyle. Thank you, Kyle. I need a lot of help. We have been working for a long time of trying to establish a way around the Little Art Church cemetery for our trail so that we can return the property that the Navy took from the church when the railroad was constructed in 1942. We have been working with the church, the neighboring landowners. The challenge we have is that the land that we would route the trail around is zoned A1 and A2. Okay? Trails are not allowed on A1 and A2. So as we go through the modifications and the update, I would like to ask you to consider amending the A1 and A2 agricultural areas so that trails are allowed.
Okay.
And, and while you're working on that, we would also like to advocate for trails being allowed in all of the districts. Okay? So.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that ends my comments. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good timing, too, since we're coming through that now. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes, of which we are not going to do that tonight since it's not a normal meeting. Oh, we have other people? Sorry. My bad. Come on up, sir.
Thank you. Warren VZ, 8229 Lighthouse Lane. I'm the vice president of the Friends of the Trail Group. And I'm also on the Tourism Committee. And there's a bit of a conflict, I guess, in how the county's working things. On the Tourism Board, we had a tourism strategic plan, and one of the main things is outdoor recreation, of which the DRHT is currently, besides Caladon, the only example of it. So that's something the county obviously wants to support, to bring in tourism money for the county. And then for us, I see we actually have a voice count here, brings up an interesting point, when we had an Eagle Scout, or Eagle Scout project, Spectative Eagle Scout, he wanted to build a three-sided shelter, like you see in the Appalachian Trail, on the trail. And our zoning and planning commission said, no, you can't because the trail is a non-approved use on any zoning. And then we also wanted to improve a parking lot, not a paid parking lot, a parking lot that every zoning of anything in this county, every property, has a parking lot. And yet, we were told that we can't put a gravel parking lot at 20 by 30, you know, underneath the power line, because again, you can't do any improvements on the zoning because the trails are not in it. So I echo what Mr. Lynch said, that you need to add it to every zoning. Currently, the trail, since it was existing before we had zoning, it becomes whatever zoning is adjacent to it. And this runs into fun issues behind the Walmart where it's commercial on one side and R1 on the other. There's obviously A1 and A2. So I put it to you that it's already through almost every zoning in this county. You can have a road in any zoning. You should have a trail in any zoning. I don't see an issue. And I mean, you can, I'm sure, ask other counties to, you know, if they've had any problems with it, if you're afraid of the unknown. But I say you definitely need to fix this. If you want the county's strategic plan to come to fruition, you need to make us be able to improve the outdoor trails. So it's a little frustrating when we run into these administrative issues. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All righty. Jumped the gun on that. Any other public comments? Mr. Dines, do we have anybody online? Thank you. All right. Approval of minutes, there are none for this meeting, which brings us to Community Planning Liaison Officer, Naval Support Facility, South Patto. Mr. Hastings, how are you doing this evening?
Good. Thank you.
You have anything to report, or we're going to be, we're going to have a whole kind of stuff to talk about.
Absolutely, yeah. Looking forward to the discussion. I just wanted to mention that Captain Copeland sent his regrets. He couldn't make it tonight, but he's very, he's tracking everything and he's definitely very engaged and excited to see what comes out.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Thank you all for coming here tonight. Next item on the agenda is a plan review, which we do not have one. Public hearings, there are none tonight, which brings us to the zoning and subdivision ordinance update from the Berkeley group. Thank you all for making the trip back down. Hope everybody's doing well.
We're good. Thank you for having us.
Welcome. The glory is yours.
All right. Hello, everyone. We have a big one ahead of us here tonight, so we're going to talk about the military overlay here with the folks from Dogren. And then we're also going to talk about the use matrix that you have in front of you. So just the, what we're going to review tonight, of course, is the schedule and progress to date, as always, the military overlay and the use matrix, and then what we have coming up in July. So just a reminder of the schedule, we're just about halfway through our work sessions now. After this, we'll have four more, one of which is for the entirety of the document together. So we're just at the halfway point for our work sessions, not so much for the whole project, but for our one-on-ones with you. So we've gone through public engagement, of course. We've gone through your general and administrative provisions, permits and applications, district standards, non-conformities, which again, leaves us about three articles left after tonight. We'll have use performance standards, community design standards, and then your subdivision article. And then your last work session in January, again, will be everything together. So tonight, to be super repetitive, we're going to talk about the military overlay and then your use matrix. And then, of course, coming up after all of our drafting is the adoption phase. So up first, we'll go ahead and do this in two parts tonight, to spare these gentlemen from listening to us all night long. We'll start with the military overlay, get through what we can, and hopefully get some good information, and then we'll hop over to the use matrix. So before we make it to the use matrix, we'll try to get to a really good stopping point with everyone in the room, make sure that we're all on the same page and comfortable with decisions going forward, and then we'll hop over. So if you have it in front of you, our basis for drafting this division, which will be in Article 5, your overlay district standards, the area itself, the boundary, and the subareas within that are based on the JALUS maps, which I have on a map or on a slide here, and you may have them there with you. This was done in the JALUS study, and forgive me, I don't remember when that was done, but recently? Do you know?
January 2015 was the publication.
And then as far as the text of the document, it was a bit of both. It was a bit of collaboration with Dogren, a little bit with staff, what we've heard from both parties, and then what the JALUS recommended, as well as Army Regulation 200-201, Chapter 14, and a little bit of reference to a DOD document that seems to have gone into hiding, but it is referenced in the JALUS. So the first revisions we want to note here is Section 552, the applicability, that's going to move to Division 1 of Article 5. It's just here tonight for you all to look at the purpose of the division, and we're going to move that. So it's not going to live here. And then this is also talking about where the military overlay applies, which is essentially the boundaries that are delineated, and those will be shown on the zoning map, and that will be something that's done throughout this process by the GIS team here in King George. So once that final boundary is determined, and once the subareas are determined, that will go into the zoning map. 553 is this subareas establishment. This was based on the noise contours, the noise zones, again, in the JALUS. We'll look at them on the next slide. So you'll have your overall boundary, which is the noise MCA, and then you'll have the 120 decibel contour. Mr. Hastings and his colleague can maybe dive into the contours a little bit more and explain how those are determined. But just from our point of view on how we found the boundaries and the subareas, we went with the noise MCA as the overall area, and then you have three, it's broken into three subareas. Subarea 1 is this overall boundary. Subarea 2 will be this little guy sort of in there. It's hard to see, but I have a zoom coming up. This is going to be your 62 decibel contour, so a little bit more control, a little bit more review. And then you're going to have your subarea 3, which is furthest in. This is your most intense, most review. This is noise zone 3 on the map. This is 70 decibels or greater, I believe it would be, or less. So here we have a zoom in, and most of subarea 3, if not all, gentlemen, correct me if the map isn't totally accurate, is all of Dogren. Subarea 2 has a little bit outlying the Dogren area, and then, of course, subarea 1, which isn't shown here. So Section 554 goes into some little specific requirements for the military overlay, which this is where we're going to get into, hopefully having some dialogue with these gentlemen here, about frequency, noise standards. That's where these things would live, that really speak to the MCAOD as a whole. So what the JALUS has told us and where we've come up with these general requirements, particularly uses, that are permitted, prohibited, in the MCAOD is based on the JALUS. And again, it's coming out of Army Regulation 200-1, Chapter 14. This is talking about noise-sensitive uses. Fellas, I'll go over this briefly, and if you want to jump in, if you know more than I do, or want to dive into it a little bit more. But subarea 1 would, of course, be your overall area. So that orange, let me go back, this area here, this would be the least amount of restriction. It would basically be just as it is in the underlying zoning district, no restriction on residential, educational, or medical uses. Your subarea 2 would be the middle ground. You would have a little bit of restriction on your residential, educational, and medical uses with performance standards, which at this point, what we've drafted would just be noise abatement, either noise attenuation, bringing it down to a reasonable level, whether it's a residential use or not. And then your subarea 3 would have prohibited uses for residential, educational, and medical, meaning they wouldn't be allowed at all. Again, this is based on Army Regulation. It's not something that you have to do, but if either of you have anything to add there, feel free to pop in.
Yes, thank you. First thing, I apologize for not introducing Tom Stanley, who's the Installation Program Integrator. He's the top civilian at the base, and he's very knowledgeable about all things on base and off base. So really glad he could be here. I think you told the story well, which is the story that I had to go back and learn when I kind of started this process. And I want to thank staff, for sure, for their patience, and everyone for their patience throughout this process. So I'm not a noise expert, and I wasn't an expert at Dogren, so I had to go back and look at the history a little bit and how we kind of got to it. And I didn't want to reinvent the wheel at all. So I wanted to use the existing documents in the JALUS, which I imagine that some of you were involved with at the time. But that was, you know, a series of meetings and interviews and research by a consultant group that produced that. And encourage everyone to look at that if they haven't already, it's available online. So really, and that set the stage for the comp plan calling for this overlay district. So to me, it's kind of a straight-line story. So I went back to that JALUS, which uses a 2009 noise study, which I know is a long time ago, but talking with the operators, it's still valid, even though, and this might be a question later, the airfield is now decommissioned. That actually was a small use, a small mission of Dogren when it was active. It's the testing, it's the impulsive noise, which is a phrase I've learned by looking back on the 2009 noise study, and then what that was based on, which is, as Stephanie said, the Army Regulation 200-1, Chapter 14, which is impulsive noise, which is applicable to our situation and the impacts that we have. So, long story, but I think it all flows into where we are today and where we're at. And I think those regulations, which, you know, we provided, I think describe the situation. And, you know, we wanted to give that to you guys and to them as they built this, and, you know, I think we're happy to answer questions about that.
Okay. Thank you, Thomas. Another thing to note.
I just wanted to mention that we, part of the reason you guys are seeing those zoomed in PDFs is we don't have the data yet. We're looking for it. We hope it exists, those, the GIS maps, and I know it'll make things easier to find out where things actually are when you guys put it on your zoning map. I don't think that's an unsolvable problem, but, you know, we're working on it and hoping that it's buried somewhere.
Another thing to note here about the uses and what's prohibited and permitted is back to Thomas's point about Dogren no longer having runway or doing planes, having planes in and out. The big concern here is noise. So we've, and frequency interference. So we've added, basically, that throughout the entire military overlay, that any use that would have a large frequency disruption would be prohibited across the board. This would be, you know, cell phone towers, heavy machinery, those sorts of things. This is something that we hope, can hopefully be collaborative with you all. I don't, we don't certainly know what all would be frequency interfering. So we have a little list there now, drafted. It may be right on par. We might need to tweak that a little bit, but that's something I wanted to call out here as well. Section 554B is also about disclosures. This is something that came straight out of the JALUS and something that it seems like would answer a lot of problems as far as people coming into the county, buying property in the overlay and being aware of it. So what we've done here is basically requiring disclosures as part of a rezoning, conditional zoning, special exception, a site plan within the MCAOD regardless of subarea. And that would just make sure whether it's a renter or a buyer of property, that they know they're in the military overlay, to hopefully aid and no longer someone coming six months later and saying, my house is really loud, please help. So we added that in there. Thomas has suggested, after we drafted, to also include a note for frequency interference. He gave a great example of old garage door openers maybe not working. So that's something we'll be putting in there that you don't have in the draft in front of you. Just want to call that out. And then, as I noted before, some of this is in a placeholder stage. So 554C and D would be general standards throughout the overlay for noise and frequency abatement. This, again, is where we're going to rely on Dogren. I'll keep getting through our big changes here, and then we can hop back to these placeholders. Any questions so far? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's okay.
So if we go back to the overlays.
Do you want to see the zoom in, or do you want to see this?
No, no, just the frequent, I'm sorry, the dB levels. Next one?
The little one, or the one before this?
That's a chart.
This one?
Nope.
Oh, I see what you're, okay. Hold on. Hang tight.
The narratives.
This one?
So, I'm not understanding, when we talk about 120 dB contour, we're saying that a single source generating 120 dB and how it radiates out, or are you saying that in that area totality, 120 dB?
Can either of you all explain the contours a little bit more? I feel like you're, you got to help me.
Sure. So there's two different DBs going on, and this is something I learned. And I think it's basically described, but one is the peak, and that is the, the 120 is a peak noise. And that is, they're different DBs. And it's, I'd have to go back into it, but I think it kind of describes it in the definitions. One is, basically, one is the peak and one is the average. So that's, the lower numbers, 57, 62, 70, those are all average, and the 120 is a peak. And I could go, I can read straight from the JALUS, because that talks about it, and the background report as well, which is a little harder to find, but we can provide that if you can't find it. But it's, that's the peak noise measurement.
And generated from the base?
Single source.
Single source.
Yes. Yes. And this is all, you know, the studies of noise is a whole, is a whole study and field. And it's been found that this is, yes, that 120 is, is a, you know, is, I think it believes is described as moderate noise area, which I think is a moderate noise complaint area, which I think is a good way to describe it.
Yeah. Depends on concentration. So if you have 120 dB spread out over a large area, no problem. You have 120 dB in this room, problem. So I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding what we're talking about. So it's 120 dB peak across that entire larger envelope?
Yes. I mean, that's, I believe that's how they came up with the contour.
Dissipating as it goes out. Okay.
Yes.
And if I may ask, just for the, for our edification, what would be an example of something that would generate noise of that, of that decibel level?
Like a specific?
Thing?
I mean, the booms that you, that we hear, I believe, would, I mean, that's, would be a moderate noise producing impact.
You're talking specifically about like naval artillery or cannon fire, is what you're, you have in that line?
Yes. I mean, I think that's, what does it say? Large caliber is one of the, is one of them, large caliber and, I think, large caliber weapons. But you can see from, if you go back to the contour, I mean, the center of it is the river, is along the river. So it's, you know, where we fire projectiles down the river. And that's, I think, the primary.
Yeah, the main range, and then the EEA, where they do some detonations on weapon systems that have been tested, and then they'll detonate them with explosives. And those are the two main noise generators that you see when they start out in the epicenters of both of those.
Yeah. For like equivalency, it's like a, like a 10-cylinder diesel generator, not in a box that confines the noise. So if it were just open to the air, it'd be a large diesel generator.
I, I mean, I'm not, not being from NSWC Dogren Division, I don't know exactly what they're testing now, but I think they, months ago, they did a 12-inch, and I think there was a lot of notifications out that went out for PAO, Public Affairs, and public notifications about when they were testing that, because it was a little bit higher than normal. I think for the most part, it's 5-inch.
Any other questions right now? Okay. We will, okay?
So just so I'm clear, it has educational uses as a heading, but then under, like, after university, it says business or trade. So is that like commercial uses? There are a lot of commercial areas in Dogren, so I'm making sure those are still.
So we, I should have said this. So we based this chart also in conjunction with the use matrix that you have. So the uses that we've introduced in the matrix that would, if it stays as is, would come in. So we included business or trade, since we have that as a use, which would, yes, it's under commercial, but at its essence, it's also educational. That's up to you. Let's say you wanted to leave everything but business or trade school and take that out. Or trade school. Yes, yes, not, not trade commerce. No, trade school.
Commerce. Still permitted in the area?
Yes. And I would imagine, I don't know this for certain, perhaps these gentlemen do, I would imagine it's probably geared more towards primary school and high school and the littler kids. But again, we took all of your education uses and put those together, including daycares. So we could take, we could take that apart if you wanted to, if you want to leave business and trade schools alone. Okay. We ready to move on? Okay. So the next few things we'll go over are Section 555, 556, and 557. These are, again, half placeholder, half not. These would be for the specific subareas. They would talk about the intents and characteristics of the subarea, and then it would also talk about any additional standards beyond the general that are only for that subarea. As of now, we only have additional standards for subarea 2, and that ties back to the chart on Table 5.1 of your draft. It's Page 4, and that's talking about the noise-sensitive uses, where we said you can have in subarea 2, medical, educational, or residential uses if you meet these performance standards. And again, those are for basically noise abatement, making sure that you are accounting for the noise there. And then subarea 3, same, we have some placeholders there. We would need to talk with Dogren tonight and see what, if any, additional standards would be required outside of anything that we set for the entire overlay. Section 558 is administration. Just want to call out here that a site plan would be required for all development within the military overlay. This text, much like the text at the beginning of the draft, will move to Article 3 to keep everything nice and streamlined, but we have it here for your review. I don't have it in front of me, but I want to say we've also required that they would have a traffic impact analysis, not something that's required. We thought you may like it. We can talk about that as well. And then 558 is for Dogren's review. This would essentially require that all development goes to Dogren for review. It's anything that would change the comp plan, zoning ordinance. King George County would notify at least 30 days prior to any public hearing, and then Dogren would provide comments within 30 days of receiving that application. That timeframe can be cut down if that's too long for you and you want a little bit more wiggle room for yourselves to incorporate any comments, which leads me to the final thing here. The comments would not be binding. You can consider them, but what Dogren would present to you all as far as comments, you would not have, you would not be held to. You could incorporate it if you, if you wanted, but you would not have to do that, I think.
Stephanie, if I may implore you to move on. We would like to designate a particular person, such as Mr. Hastings' physician, so that we have one point of contact for that review. Also, we would notify them long before 30 days before the public hearing. We would probably change that to giving them the application within the first 30 days of receipt instead.
The way we have it drafted now, and I, Thomas, I don't know if this is something you sent, or it came from the JALUS, or a bit of both, but right now, we have the person it's going to is the NSF Dogren Installation Commander. Is that a reasonable position, or is there someone better suited?
Some of the things I sent were just out of the comp plan. I think you had that in, I believe, as a, there's a list of sort of requirements. I think you had that in, in, I believe, as a, as a, there's a list of, of, of sort of requirements. I think it's actually that list there, or a lot of them. So I wanted to, I'm sure she had looked at that, but that's from us. But I, we're happy to, to follow, I, I think, what, what Heather said, that sounds.
I believe when we had the J-Lo's committee and we did the memorandum of understanding with Dahlgren, that we listed your position specifically as the point of contact so that you could take it onto your side with, with whom you work with.
That sounds good.
Yeah, we, we just want to make sure we have one point of contact so we know who we're working with and, and they know what to do with it at that point.
Okay, thank you, Heather.
And then, I guess I had a question about the site plans for residential homes. We do have quite a bit of single-family dwellings outside of the base that are there currently. I just want to make sure that this is not being too restrictive for those existing homes. You know, they want to build something minor, like a deck, a pool, that we had discussed previously, that we're not inadvertently requiring a full site plan for something minor like that.
I think we can put that in with the site plan language that we're going to have in Article 3.
Okay, great.
When you get that, if you don't see it, remind me.
I'll try to remember.
Okay, so now, I think we've gone over sort of the, the high-level drafting of what we did, what we've incorporated. We can maybe take a few questions from the planning commission, if you all have any. And then I would love if we can just open the floor up and, and talk with the gentleman from Dahlgren and talk about some of these placeholders, particularly any noise or frequency requirements. We may not reach full consensus tonight on the final draft, but hopefully we can have some good discussion. So are there any, any comments so far, questions about what you've heard? Yes?
Actually, I think there needs to be one more thing added to the placeholder items.
Okay.
Along with frequency, one that addresses power.
Okay, power generation, where it's coming from, or?
Power levels.
Okay.
And it is possible, that very possible, they may meet, anyone could meet a frequency requirement, but beyond what, a harmonic frequency, generate enough power and still be a great disturbance to the base. So my power also needs to be considered.
Anybody else have any questions?
I understood, well, first of all, do we have a map of the overlay where the federal property ends and?
We don't have, I don't have one here, I don't know if you all have one, Heather, but this, I don't know how accurate this is. This is from the study that yellow portion would be Dahlgren. Again, I don't know the boundaries specifically, if that's correct or not.
So I did have our GIS department kind of do a 1 to 5-mile radius, which I have in the corner here, but Mr. Dines, if you wouldn't mind pulling that up?
Do either? I, I do not know the answer to that.
Because I assumed radio frequency.
Do you all know what the frequency?
That was specific to electromagnetic interference, EMI, not the frequency of a user of that nature.
How broad a range is that in the spectrum?
Not that specific, no.
We got to follow up there.
Yeah, I can follow up, but I, yes, I can follow up. But I don't think, I don't, I don't know. I haven't come to, I haven't seen anywhere where that's, it's identified like that. Not an expert, but I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't know.
What are we talking about? Were we talking about just audio? Are we talking about electromagnetic, magnetic radiation, you know, microwaves, RF? What?
I think using the example of, of old garage door openers that they provided me as, as an example of something that they can, they can disrupt, it's been known to disrupt. So the frequency that those, that they use, garage doors opener, you know, there's some sort of conflict there, which is why we wanted to put it in the, in the noise disclosure. And I think this would be, so there's, to me, there's household interruptions that, that we might impact. And I think that's why we wanted to put it in the disclosure, to let residents know that there's a possibility that something like that could happen. And then we're talking like a large-scale, you know, like wind farms have issues that can cause issues to us, and I know they're aware of that. But I think through the, then, as we receive notification, I think from, in discussions with them, that should be sufficient, that we, we can then identify, we can see, we can, we can find out, you know, see those projects that will, that could cause impacts, and that we would then provide, you know, review and, and some, and some sort of, you know, response. But I don't, from their point, it wasn't an issue that we needed to highlight things on a very, you know, item-by-item or use-by-use basis in this. I gave them the opportunity, please tell me if there anything you want us to put in. And, and they said, no, that's, that, that's sort of as, as is, is enough, as long as they know what's coming. And, and the, and it's, you know, the status quo is pretty good right now. But I think that's why we want to kind of put it in writing exactly where we can, the boundaries that are going to be in this, in the, in the overlay district are sufficient for, for us to see, you know, projects that might cause impacts.
So reference, I'm, I'm sure Mr. Hastings can agree that we've had some trouble kind of nailing down a map that would work for this overlay district. So just as, as a starting point, I had our GIS department pull this aerial and just put a 1 through 5-mile radius, because 5 miles doesn't seem like a lot, but as that buffer, it is, it is quite encumbrance. I think overall, King George County certainly wants to work with Dahlgren, wants to, to be amenable, wants to make sure you have that compatible growth. But just kind of nailing down, what does that look like? More formalized and enforceable overlay plan is what we're looking for here.
Right, I remember when we were coming through the comp plan a couple of years ago, and there was some miscommunication about what was, I guess, desired to be in an overlay district. And it, it ended up encompassing what was almost a third of the county, I think.
Yes, sir.
And so we, we don't, we don't want to go through that again. But I was just wondering, going back to, kind of to Ms. Hall's point, as well as to the gentleman on the end. We noted earlier, I believe, that the noise study was from 2009, but it's, it still holds relevancy. I just wondered, so what, to what level have we coordinated, or has the host coordinated, I should say, with the tenant commands on the base to ensure that we're not putting something in that may be overly restrictive for future testing in the event that, you know, there should be a new project that comes onto the base? And, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to say, well, hey, we can't accept that work because it's not in keeping with or in accordance with our, you know, our, our noise military overlay restrictions or something. So I was just wondering if, you know, so two questions, I guess, like, one, have, have you coordinated with the tenant commands? And, and two, to what input have they been able to provide feedback on that?
I think we've coordinated certainly with the, with the operators and spoke with NSWC Environmental and also with their frequency manager, which I think are, are, kind of cover all of their activities and their future expansion plans as a buffer zone, something that they have talked about. But, but again, I think we have coordinated with, with the major, I think.
Okay, just making sure.
Operators that would, that would cause these kinds of impacts.
We, so looking at this map, do we think we're at a point where we could maybe nail down something that would be more of a definitive boundary or?
And when, in order to implement an overlay, we do need definitive boundaries. I know that the noise contours gives us a good idea, but it doesn't follow property lines or give us a measurement because we're unable to find those maps. So again, just to give us a starting point, we, we put some of these buffers per the mile radius on there. Once we decide, you know, how far that buffer will be, we'll be able to hone down onto property lines, streets, et cetera, so that we can easily identify who's in the overlay and who is not. Yes, yes, sir.
So could I ask, environmental conditions, what, what does that do to particularly the noise issues? I mean, I, I remember it being a significant issue. You know? A nice, clear, sunny day, you pull the trigger on one of those guns on the line. It's a lot different than if you've got cloud cover and the atmospheric conditions are such. So do these numbers move around on you?
My understanding from the way the range operations does it, they measure all those factors of environmental humidity and wind direction, and they take into account what level of noise they're going to get when they, when they launch that thing or shoot the gun. So they do, they conform to these, because if they're outside these limits and they exceed these standards, they, they won't shoot that day.
These, these would represent your scenario that you would test in?
So every shot that they take is recorded, and then the noise, and they match against their software and their algorithms that they've been, they've been using for years. My understanding, I, like I said, I was speaking from just passing experience with the range operations, because I've asked some of these same questions about how, how do they measure the noise? And they've got a whole system that does measure all those conditions and then allows them to say go or no-go, whether or not they're going to exceed the decibel levels.
And I think that's why the, the J-Lo's includes a half-mile buffer around that moderate noise contour of 120 peak to provide a little bit of, of a buffer for, you know, some of that variation. So is that not, I guess our question would be, I mean, we, is that not a possible boundary, the one, the half-mile beyond and absent?
I, I think the question is, is where is that noise contour to start that half a mile? I think without those beginning numbers, those beginning maps, I wouldn't know where that half-mile starts and ends.
So just the static, the PDF?
That, that PDF provides zero detail.
Well, I think the center of the gun range, right, is a point. And then similarly on Pumpkin Neck, where they do the big booms, is a point.
So the, the areas in blue, those are the actual Dahlgren property lines, which also includes Pumpkin Neck. So that's kind of where that 1-mile, 2-mile, et cetera, starts from is their property lines.
So we, we did, we did provide the, the 62, the 57, 62, and 70 GIS. So we, those do exist, and I believe I provided them, I know it. So that's, I know those aren't.
I believe that Mr. Comboy had mentioned that it didn't provide the GIS point that he needed and had communicated that with you. So at this time, I, I don't have that information unless you have something different.
I think I sent it to him, but we can, we can talk about that. But it's, either way, it's, it's not the outer line for sure, not yet. I haven't given up.
So, so what, it sounds like we, we need maybe a little bit more granularity on the, on the, maybe the nucleus or nuclei where the sound sources may originate, and then establish our boundaries from that point? And we, and we still need a little bit more granularity on that?
Yes, I, I think that GIS is happy to, to work with Dahlgren to, to find where those numbers start and end, but they need that, those beginning points in order to work from.
And, and so we're, we're kind of in a bit of a holding pattern until that time?
I think that even in the meantime, we can still discuss what does, once we figure out where those lines are, what does the overlay actually look like? Of course, in the past, we've had discussions about the real estate disclosures, compatible development, you know, what is compatible for Dahlgren? You know, I, I think as, as positions change and commands change, that those, those wants are a little different. And I think that we're, we're meaning to nail this down with an actual ordinance so that developers come in and they, they know that what they're looking to do on their property is in line with what Dahlgren's wishes and, and their, their goals are there.
I would just say, I think some of the things that we're, you know, looking for from, from you all and from Dahlgren is to, you know, see, is having three subareas appropriate? You know, that could simply be, you know, the, the most intense subarea 3, of course, is maybe just those blue lines there, it's actual, you know, Dahlgren itself. And then where is subarea 2 and subarea 1? How far out are you going to go from Dahlgren? And then within those, as, as Heather mentioned, what are the uses? What are those performance standards? Do you want to say, okay, within the subarea 2, it needs any residential, you know, needs sound attenuation? Within subarea 1, are there any, you know, restrictions there pertaining to particular types of uses? Or is it, at this point, we're only just making sure property buyers are aware and have that disclosure? Other localities do things differently. Some of them just say, here is the area, and we're just doing a property disclosure. So it's up to you all to decide if you want to limit some uses, make some performance standards for uses, those types of things. And I, and I think I heard, you know, Mr. Hastings talking about frequency, and, and that's an item that we put in there to say, okay, here's some frequency limits and some specifics there. And it sounded to me like maybe we, they don't want to put those specifics in there, that we can back off of those things and they can address those as applications come forward. So that's the type of things that we need to hash out and, and come to some conclusions on for your ordinance.
And I think that's one of the issues that I've, it, it's going to be a little tough, right? Because it's, it's kind of like trying to jam a cat back into a bag in a way, because that area outside the gate is one of the most densely populated areas in the county, right? So what do we do about the existing houses, businesses, et cetera, that are already there, that have been there for, you know, 50, 75 or more years? So that's, that's one thing. And, but then if we're, you know, to, to kind of dovetail along with the conversation about noise, if we're talking about ordinance testing, then wouldn't that mostly impact the localities that are down river? Because you're talking about, I mean, there's very little of King George County once you get past the range. And so then you get into Westmoreland County on the Virginia side, and Northumberland County, and then Charles and St. Mary's County across the river. So I guess I'm wondering, like, do, I know that's clearly out of our purview, but do, do we, do we consider that anyway, or?
That lower blue outlined area, explosives.
Right, Pumpkin Neck, right.
Yeah, so I mean, you're got, you got a lot of noise sources from there. And if I were them, I, I assume most of your munitions are pretty desensitized to EF and all that kind of stuff. But, you know, maybe some thought there. It's just, there's a lot of points where a noise or an activity could be going on. So I mean, I'm leaning toward the idea of just measuring from the boundary line of the base. Because they've got a gun line, they've got the explosives area. They've got, you've got bunkers scattered around. Don't think one of those is going to blow up on you, that would be an accident. But, you know, there are a lot of sources, but the EF and all that kind of stuff, and, you know, the potential for interference with the residents of the county could happen almost anywhere on base. And, and I know, at least in my days out there, they were trying to keep construction and work back away from the property line, the fence line. But some of it was still pretty close. So I mean, I, I don't know if you're going to find a, a point, you know? It's more like the whole sites, a potential problem.
Let me view.
Yeah, but we're looking at multiple factors here. We're not only looking at sound, we're, we're looking at, you know, radio frequencies, we're looking at, you know, EMI, we're looking at that. And those are, the sound would almost be easy. You got the gun line, you got the. You got the gun line, you got pumpkin neck, you still got a helipad, right? Yeah. I.
Trying to accomplish two, two things here. One is to, for the homeowners who live in the affected area, they have responsibility for disclosures and possible land use limitations in order to accommodate the base, the base's needs to do what it does. So we're trying to, one, accomplish meeting the base's needs and then also meeting the landowners. You know, so who we touch and how we get there is another thing. A while ago, I did ask for benchmarks or best practices from other jurisdictions.
Yeah, so.
We've got Indian Head, we've got Virginia has, you know.
During our research, and if there are communities that we missed, we can certainly look, take another look at them before this comes back to you all at your next meeting to review a second time. But most of what we found was based on, on airplanes, airfields, air traffic, which isn't necessarily what, what everyone here, I think, was going for. So we ran into a little bit of an issue with that. Stafford was our, our best, best ally in drafting. They basically, they're really simple. They basically just ask for, for people to be aware of the, of the overlay. And then we found a couple out of the state that talk about military overlays that aren't, that aren't air heavy. But as far as Virginia, Virginia based, we ran into some trouble finding military overlays that weren't airfield directed. Or about airplanes flying or height, not so much noise and frequency. So you guys are a special case. We had a little bit of trouble. Again, if you know of something, we even looked across the river in Maryland and to no avail, really. So we're crafting something brand new.
I think Wallop.
I feel like we would have looked there, it's not coming to mind. Do you remember? We can take a look at it again, but.
We do detonation there.
Okay.
Maybe Wallops Island where they launch rockets from.
What was it?
Wallops Island.
On the eastern shore, you know.
What's the? Indian Head, just, their testing's different. And it's, it's more production, not so much testing. They have smaller, not noise arcs for sure, that go most, and it's on the edge of the river. Where it's a little bit wider, so they don't really cause the same kind of impacts. And state of Maryland, I think, is very different than state of Virginia. They have state sort of requirements, which makes it, it's just different. So as Stephanie said, Stephanie, Jess, sorry. It's credit to King George County for taking the lead on something like this that's not state mandated. So, and we appreciate all of this, so thank you.
So assumption, assuming base wants to bring some new fangled thingy. They come to the county and they say, hey, it's going to make this kind of boom, it's going to go approximately in this area. And we say, hey, that looks good. Or someone comes to you, part of the county.
Are they doing that on their own property or are they coming outside the fence line?
Just on the base. I'm just, you know, trying to develop a scenario so I understand what's going on. So then, on the other side, let's say there's a developer that comes in the Daugren area and they say, hey, here's what we want to do, here's what we want to build. Do we share that with the base? And the base says, uh, yeah, that'll work, it won't miss anything. Do we have that kind of?
We do, with the JALUS, we did come up with that memorandum of understanding. We invite Mr. Hastings to all of our development committee meetings. That's how he got a place on our agenda every month. I think the, the hard part on our end is a developer comes in, they, you know, let's say they want to put 100 townhomes behind Walmart. And this commander wants houses, but the next commander doesn't. Or, you know, what is compatible development for Daugren? What does that look like? Just kind of having that definitive, you know, developers want to do what the county wants. They don't want to spin their wheels and spend a bunch of money and get, get turned down, right? So they want to do what we ask of them. But if we can't tell them what we want, or it changes continually, then it's, it's a bit counterproductive. And so that was our, our hope with this overlay is kind of nailing down what is compatible development? What is within Daugren's purview, what's outside of their purview, et cetera?
So to me, it sounds like it's a, a smaller working group with some, some technical folks to understand kind of what they might need and what might be best for the county? And how we can do that kind of cooperative?
Right, so anything that's by right is, is, is by right. But if there was a rezoning or a special exception and it was in the Daugren area, our gentleman's agreement is that we would send it to Mr. Hastings and ask for his opinion. And then he would go to his group and send that opinion back to us. And, and we have provided that during public hearings for other projects that's come before this commission. So it's more of the, the base kind of weighing in rather than giving us also the tools to definitively say, this does not meet the requirements of our ordinance. It's right here, black and white, and we cannot approve you based on these.
Well, I agree with you. I think it, it could sway depending on who's in command of the base at the time. And that's where I think, I'm really thinking it's a smaller technical group to really get a better understanding of what, what they need. How we can support that. And then also really get into the nitty gritty of, is that really what you need? I'll help.
Yeah, I just, I have serious doubts you're ever going to get that.
And that's likely why it's been so.
These gentlemen know what's going on out there today. But in my 30 years out there, I would have never dreamed some of the crap that came on base that we had to deal with internally. The railgun, for instance.
Yeah, I'm being nonspecific.
Who knows what the next?
Exactly. And that's, I, I'm confident that we can develop envelopes for the overlays that are near term compatible. Leave opportunity open for further discussion if they bring a new system online. You know, we go back and talk about it a little bit more. But I think that if we can have a smaller group, get more technical, that we really can come up with an opportunity to develop language to get an ordinance in place. So there's understanding on both sides. Where if, if right now, we're all kind of just, but with an opportunity to have a more focused discussion. I think we can get you to a point to developing language that helps the county and also gives the base the opportunity to, to bring new opportunities.
So I guess my question at this point is, you know, we've been creating this military overlay district for many, many, many years. So is there a happy medium that we can come to today that says, here's at least some, some base guidelines? Both for us as well as Daugren, as well as development that wants to come in? Just to give some, some, I don't want to say loose, but some flexible guidance would be beneficial, I think.
And so in terms of where the overlay is at or what the overlay controls?
I think that in the zoning world of private, I have to have a line. I have to say that you're either in that settlement area or you're in that overlay or you're not. And then, once you create that overlay, I think that's where you can give that flexibility of, you know, here are some guidelines, but we're willing to review anything you got, essentially. I, I think that's what I'm hearing.
So I can tell you, no HF transmission above 100 watts. You know, within a thousand feet of the outline of the base. That's going to get you the power, it's going to get you the frequency. I'm not sure.
Can I pause you? Will you say it again? Is that, what does HF mean?
High frequency. It's a range within the spectrum. Now, that's only for certain ordinance. So that's where I would need a little more information to, to give latitude. But I can tell you at the higher frequency, you wouldn't have to be so far out. You could even be closer with the higher frequency and power could stay the same. Other thing is the focus, focus, is it focus noise? Because you're going to have a lobe and then you're going to have the 360 radiation. But the 360 radiation of that noise isn't going to be as intense. It's not going to go as far, it's going to dissipate sooner. So you're going to have your lobe, that's really the issue. And then those side lobes. So understanding, but I believe, just like Mr. Kendricks said, you're not going to be able to nail it down. But you could kind of group, hey, this part of the base or this part pumpkin head. So we wouldn't get too specific because I do, I think it would be an undertaking. But if we're trying to get to something today, I'd say the lobes are probably focused down range. Reasonable? I think your dissipation is pretty reasonable to the base lines. As long as it's focused on the range.
So just looking at the GIS map with the buffer contours, as kind of a rule of thumb, we've been following more along the two mile buffer, give or take, obviously. I don't know if that's helpful at all, but kind of goes a little bit above the top of the hill at Daugren, down Windsor, as well as all the way through Matthias Point. Which encompasses all of the 301 Daugren area.
So if we do the two miles, then we just share back and forth? There could be exceptions or there could be discussion? Is that what you're thinking? Or is that, you know, kind of line in the?
I think that's kind of where we can say, you know, you must do these real estate disclosures. These are the kinds of things that Daugren would like to see in these areas. You know, kind of defining that compatible growth, but I'm sure putting in some sort of language that provides a bit of flexibility for the, the unknown. The things that we never dreamed of would come here, but may be really great for Daugren as well as the citizens.
I think that's reasonable and then you share the information.
And so how would that apply to everything that's currently there?
So again, by right is, is still by right. This is, this is same as like settlement areas.
Right.
Rezonings, special exceptions, things that have that more than an administrative approval.
And this may not be what you're asking, but if someone, if someone's there now, they, they don't have to go get a disclosure if they've been there for 20 years or something. That, if you're already there, it's sort of in effect after this is adopted and signed and moving forward.
Okay, so that, that and the by right helps me understand. Because that was, and just to frame it historically a little bit, so when we were going through this last time, one of the comments that was made was, we will downzone what's in this proposed area. I'm like, no, that's probably not going to do us a lot of favors from a litigious standpoint. So, yeah, I think, I think that helps out a lot just to know that it's more of a, I don't know. It doesn't, it doesn't change the existing status of something. I mean, so if I've, or anyone owns a piece of land that's A2, they can still build whatever they want to by right on an A2 piece of land.
Right, so A2, for example, minimum lot size of two acres, with the exception of a cluster, the same subdivision requirements. Now, they may be required to, to do some real estate disclosures because of it.
Sure, that's fair. Yeah, that's very fair.
But as far as.
Then it's a buyer beware, right?
The people that have lived along Roseland Avenue or Potomac Avenue for hundreds of years. It, it will not affect them unless they try to redevelop in some fashion.
Okay, I like that.
Can I ask, is it safe to say that we're hearing maybe the table 5.1 where it talks about those noise sensitive uses? Do, do we want to take that out and not prescribe uses? And take it case by case with Daugren's review or leave that in there with some tweaks?
So are we talking about two things? Because I'm getting a little, I seem to be going in circles here. We're talking about, one, telling our residents, just notifying them, mandatory notification that if you live within this area, wherever we set that boundary, you're going to hear the noise from the base. So one of the biggest complaints we hear is people roll in here and go, I bought this land 10 years ago and I bought it because of all the trees around me. Now you're building houses or you're building this or that and I don't want to look at it. So we're talking about notification to the, to the, to the citizenry of the county that within this area, you're going to hear a noise.
Of any new type of development. So like if, if Joe developer comes in and he wants to put in a subdivision in that military overlay, those people buying will now have those real estate disclosures. They can't say, I shopped on Saturday and didn't hear a thing and I moved in on Monday and my windows are shaking.
Exactly, yeah, that, that kind of required notification to them before they purchase and do whatever it is they're going to do. But are we also saying we want to restrict certain activities that could impact the base? That's the, the more troublesome one for me. Because then in that regard, you do need to know at what limit, or otherwise you can't enforce it.
Correct, and I, I think that's where putting in that definitive line, you know, if, if, let's say you choose the, the two mile radius. Or we find the, the noise decimal lines and we, we can put that to a GIS map along property lines, along streets. And define that actual line and say, if you are within this area, we will not allow X, Y, and Z without approval from Daugren. So I think it's twofold. I think one is, is residential is, is the biggest complaint, you know? I don't want to hear it, I didn't know it was there. I, I know that's a big complaint generator for Daugren. They've talked about, you know, hospital window attenuation and sound attenuation, things like that. But at minimum, a real estate disclosure that says, you know what you are buying is, is a good practice. I think we can all agree. Now, step two is commercial development. What kind of commercial development do we want to see in Daugren that's compatible? You know, once upon a time, we were fearful of BRAC and shutting down Daugren, that we were building too close to the fence line, that traffic was a problem, things like that. And we said, well, we don't want Daugren to shut down. They're great neighbors and we want to have you here in King George County. How can we help you help us kind of thing? So I think that's what we're trying to put into motion here today.
Okay, so, so pick a number that we're all sort of comfortable with about the noise and just establish it as the line that inside that they have, you know, any purchaser from this point forward, or once we enact it from this point forward, has to be notified. But on the other one, I guess we're relying on them to tell you what is the level and how far out is that from them?
Right, is, is two miles acceptable? Is multifamily units acceptable? Is a, a low's acceptable? You know, what, what kind of things are acceptable in that area that is beneficial to Daugren?
So I did look again and I'm almost positive, I don't know if Kyle couldn't open what I sent previously, but I'm, I'm looking at our own GIS system, which is not the same. It's Navy GRX. But I was told, and so this tracks what I was told, which is that we have the 57, 62, and 70. So those would be the most restrictive areas. That would be area three and two, right? Or one and, what, three and two. So those would be where, you know, there'd be some uses according to the chart, according to what was proposed, is proposed, prohibited, and then also with performance standards. And as I think someone correctly said, if you want to go back to, you know, as far as you can zoom in, I know it's the PDF. But there's really only a tiny, tiny, tiny portion of, of Daugren, just outside the gate, around the marina, that would be included. And then a larger bit of land. And then a larger um, bit of land, if you go back to the one. That would be um, beneath Pumpkin Neck EA. Can this? So this would be the um, the red line. Yes. So if you can follow the red line, sort of down by the two oh five number. That the line just above that, that red line, if you follow it. Is that right or be the, yes. So it's only a small portion of land there and then just a tiny bit. Right, um, sort of where the marina is. Um, and we understand there's not a whole lot of development to the southern portion there. So that'd be just just beneath the sub area three arrow, you know, we're above the red, above the red line there. Um, but I I think it's important to get out ahead of it and get, you know, these uses established now. Before there might be any development there. So uh, we we, I hope can provide that. Um, and I hope it works, the GIS. And then just a suggestion to maybe use then, assuming that that. Uh, data does work for you, then to add a buffer off that. And that would come off then at least, you know, play around with the buffer, a half mile, a mile, two miles. Because that would come off the the, you know, the the center of the noise. Um, the buffer would extend if you could, if you can use that. Um, I think you can, I hope.
So we're coming off the red line. A half a mile, so let's.
I mean, do you mean the red line Thomas or the pink line?
I mean, the, yeah, I shouldn't have said red, should I? I I meant the like maroon line. If you see the two oh five number, the line just above that.
Just above it or below it?
Above it, just above the two oh five. That is the uh. That is the. Sixty two.
The only portion of that would.
Right.
Be in that area would be essentially Machota Creek Marina and some of their neighbors. And a very small section of Teton.
Yes, and I'm I'm using that because that's unfortunately, I mean, that's what what we can, what we're, we can give you. Um, that and then the seventy and then the fifty seven, but the fifty seven is not not very important.
Um. Can I pause you really quick? On this J Luce map, if you, if we zoom out of this, the sixty two decibel line is that light blue that sub area two is pointing to. That red burgundy line is the one hundred and thirty decibel peak noise contour.
Right, the, it's the. You don't have the, okay. We'll go back to that.
I put the big one back up if you can see it.
So I guess my question.
I guess my my point is the the line we can give, we can give you the most restrictive lines. Um, and I I don't know if I'm looking at it slightly different than what is on the J Luce, but it's it's the same data. Um. And I and I almost positive we can give that to you and you can build buffers off that. Um, you know, that would extend outwards and at least my my point is it would be the same, using the same, the center line of the. Of the uh, source of the noise.
I I guess my question would be is we have worked together on, you know, Gateway and projects behind Gateway. And that is well outside of that. So you're saying you you are not concerned with those areas?
Well, I think if if we build it, if you can build out to where roughly where uh, the. The one twenty peak noise and a half mile buffer, if we can ever find that or at least, you know, track it. Um, and you trace it on the GIS. I I don't think it should be too difficult to come within, you know, a rough estimation of it. So that is, that is where that larger area, I think, is where we would like, where the J Luce says disclosures. Um, for incoming residents and then and notifications to us of, um, you know, those development reviews. Understanding that you would. It would be easier and preferable if we had concrete. Um, uh, guidance on on every proposed land use. But um, that's not really, um, you know, we don't. We don't have lines, we don't have studies, we don't have impacts that we can refer to. Um, we have different feelings. Um. And those can vary depending on leadership as you, as you said. Um, I would just bring up the recent example of of Walnut Hill proposal for um, that. The uh, staff provided to us um, for comment.
Mr. Hastings, just remember that's a rezoning that's still under review and has not been seen by this commission.
Okay. So. And I think we are, w- we're happy with with what the J Luce recommends, what's. What's been, what we can, um, you know. What we can re- refer to our impacts. Um, and I think that's why we, yeah, we provide what what we can. Um. And.
I I guess I'm still confused, are we going by the red line, the orange line? I I mean, we've been pretty much about and by the orange line, but now you're saying you want the red line with about a half mile.
Not a half mile.
It's going to give you much.
No, no, I was just using our two miles or three miles, but using that instead of, I think your your lines use the base Dalgrin as as um. You know, the, as the zone, as the center of it.
Our current memorandum of understanding where I send you things within, you know, relatively your backyard. Um, we were ideally looking more at what the orange line looks like, which if that's not what you need and that's not what you want. We don't need to send you those things.
No, no, no.
And I don't want to give you more work, but I just want to make sure that we're on the same page and that.
I think that's why, I think the noise compatibility area, uh, which is the one twenty peak noise and a half mile buffer is is a good extent. Um, for us, it it, you know, includes a lot of the areas right next door. And a lot of the areas, you know, down range, um, that are in King George County. And also it goes out as well and we understand, you know, those impacts extend outwards. Um, some areas that we don't always, that we might not always think about those. So I was going to ask at one point, I don't, how many applications you get for by right development? And I hope I'm not going to be flooded with reviews, but I think.
Well, you wouldn't see by right development. You would, you would still see essentially the same thing that we've been sending you, except for now we would have a definitive line. As well as a definitive enforceable ordinance.
I I think it did say for by right in the.
It would be all, yeah, what we have drafted now would be all development. But maybe this will help others unless I just need to talk this out loud. So basically what we're saying is the orange line would be the furthest extent. And then instead of the GIS map that staff put together and having the boundaries equidistant from the boundaries of the base. It would be the sub areas built out would be from that red line. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Apologies for the confusion. I just was pointing out that we have, I'm almost positive, the GIS. Contours for the inner fifty seven, sixty two and seventy. I'm looking at them right now in my system and I think I provided that. I I hope that your guys' system can open it. Um, so, but we would like to get to that orange line plus plus a half mile buffer. Um, which, you know, we we stand by that, I think that's a good line, we think that's a good line. It was already sort of, you know, put out there in the J Luce. So that would be for, as I think the sub areas, that's why we have sub area one, two and three in different.
So this would be your ideal full, full boundary. This orange line and then the half, the, I think that's a half mile, right, probably? Buffer and then building out within that. Sort of how this recommends?
Think that may, yes.
So if that's the case, I think it would be a little different than how we drafted it. So if that's how it would be, sub area three, which would be the most intense, would be what line to what line? On this map? Just to go like elementary style and make it simple.
Like put the cursor on it.
It's the, would be the black line. This, that's inside the seventy.
Okay. Can I give this to you and have you?
Which one, which button is it, the red one?
Yeah.
Little one, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's pointing there, here we go, okay. This is, this is the full area, yes, it's the one twenty plus the half mile. So I I don't have the key in front of me, but this is the seventy. And this, inside this is the most restricted and and we understand that there's no nothing in the county. Um, right now, but I think. It's, I believe it says in the, in the ordinance that. The noise contours can change.
I don't remember if that's in there, but I could do, but we we could add that. But that line, that navy line now, Heather, is what sub area three in the draft.
All of this would be sub area three. As far as I'm tracking. And then the next line. Again, my colors would be the, would be a blue line, which is this, this line here. I got the, I go, okay, so I apologize, I got the red and blue confused when I was, so it's this line here. Would be the next line. So it will be sub area two would be this, all of this. All of this would be sub area two. And this is the small part of the marina.
And then so from that line out to the orange line would be sub area one.
Sub area, right, sub area one would be all of this. This, these two lines are other are are not, the red and the pink then would not be. Right. I think I got that. Yes, the pink, so, yes.
Okay, so you're saying from the blue line you just pointed out. Plus a half mile buffer.
This line plus a half mile.
For the notifications.
Yes, and the disclosure.
So that's basically the the one mile ring.
This area.
So then at that rate, the point of the sub areas would be to to control some of the uses and some of the standards for noise frequency, et cetera. The disclosure would be for everything within half mile buffer in. So that, if you go back, Thomas, a little bit more. Sorry to make you do this.
No.
Okay, so from that red line, all the way through would would require disclosures and have, they would be subject to any general requirements that we set. But then the sub areas, the point of the sub areas would be to say, okay, in the sub area one, it's pretty, pretty loose, let's let anything happen. Or in sub area two, okay, we can do some housing, but it needs to follow X, Y, and Z standard. Set.
So just, just remind clarification. Uh, as well, so in those areas. Extending the half a mile past the orange line. For anything that would be proposed. Of any nature in that, be it by right or not, would that still be reviewed by?
Yes.
Dalgrin for?
Yes, the way we have it written now, all development would go. That can certainly change if we, if we want to say everything but by right, but the way it's drafted now, it would be anything.
Which is similar to the current MOU or MOA, excuse me.
Right, I don't, and I don't want to speak for the commission, but I don't think that our intention was to send by right, correct?
I I would have concerns with by right. And I think we'd just be opening ourselves up for potential litigious action one, but I think it also would add a, uh, an administrative and time burden on an applicant.
Yes, okay, yeah, we can definitely make that change if if everyone's amenable.
I I guess from, we view that as as a way to to catch any of those frequency. I mean, catch for our own review, understanding that our um. You know, there there's very little, I would say, certainly almost not, I mean, we're, we have no role in the approval process as there, as such, there is no approval process. But I think view the notification as as.
I don't know that, I don't know that a cursory copy would be bad. I think, I mean, like it, let's say, let's say somebody's putting a, you know. Radio station or something, you got frequency issues, I don't know if that, I don't, I'm technical as a tube sock, I have no idea. But you know, when it comes down to like things that might draw the attention of the base. I don't think that a, you know. Colonial with a detached garage is going to really, you know, be much of an issue, right?
Right, so I I don't think that you want to review every single family development that comes through. Cause you you would be a little busy and our people would probably be a little upset because you wouldn't read our seven to ten day deadline. Um, but I think if you were to list the types of things that could be developed in those areas that would be concerning to Dalgrin that you would like to see. Then that, you know, doesn't take by right off the table. And it gives that guidance of what what concerns Dalgrin and what are you looking for?
And so I would like to draw everybody's attention to the the table five point one. At the bottom of that, it says restricted uses in all sub areas, so that would cover that whole area. And we did try to highlight things that we thought has some type of frequency. Um, and we would like Dalgrin to look at this list and say, no, we're not worried about resource extraction, heavy manufacturing. Yes, we're worried about public airport, private airport. You know, and and go through that list and we can take away and add to that list. And we could even change this instead of it saying restricted uses. Um, that a special exception would be required for these. Um, and they would definitely go to Dalgrin, we could, you know, change that in some other way. Um, to say that it's it's still by right, but they get to review those or, you know, whatever the desires are there. But um, you know, we are trying to make sure there are considerations related to frequency. But not limit other by right uses. Um, in that regard.
I think partly why I. Put that in there, big, so they, that was, yes, put that in there, uh, by right was, if if you look at the. Administration. Um, page seven of the. Of the attachment, of the attached, the handout, uh, Dalgrin review. Part two is, was straight from the uh, J Luce. Um. And it mentions intensity, density or use of the land. I think that's. A little bit um, vague. And maybe puts, I don't know what, how staff would determine that necessarily. Um. And I was going to ask, I should have asked before previously, maybe how many applications you would, you do get um, in this area? And how, um, you know, something we can talk about. Uh, if it doesn't make sense or dozens and dozens and hundreds and hundreds, uh, quarter or something, um, probably isn't useful. But I I'm not sure of the scale of that. Um, but if not, if not, if you strike clause one, then clause two, I did, I don't. Similar thing, I don't know if it's easier for you then to have to think about what intensity, density or use of the land, what changes it? Which of those, you know, proposed land developments?
I I'm going to step in here and and say we've, you know, been talking about this for about an hour and a half. We do have another topic to go through and I don't want to wear you guys out. I would be interested in hearing, um, and and I think Mr. Moss, you were on to something earlier talking about, you know, subcommittee or or something like that. Um, and when maybe Dalgrin can mark up this draft, provide it for you all. You all review it or a subcommittee reviews it and then make some decisions, recommendations to the full group. Um, and then get that back to us and we can incorporate it into the draft. But I don't know. How much progress we're going to make tonight and and I do want to make some progress on. And, and I do want to make some progress on our use matrix as well. So I just want to throw that out there for consideration.
So yeah, I like that. So it sounds like there's some homework that we need to get. And so we've got you all on our contract for a pretty finite amount of time. So is there a deadline by which you would like that?
If possible, June 20th, which is essentially three weeks, right? One, two, three, just under three weeks.
Right, so that way we can, we as staff and Berkeley Group can receive that feedback from Dahlgren of what you like, dislike about that draft. And then they can go ahead and take another knock at, at drafting that. And I can bring it to you at your July Planning Commission meeting as a discussion item.
Yeah.
Okay.
When's, I'm sorry, when's our next, after this, our next?
Your next would be July, what did it say, 12?
Uh, our next will be June 14th, which is too soon to have all of that.
Right, I mean, with the Berkeley input.
Our next will be July 26th.
Okay.
But you'll review this and the use matrix on your own on July 12th.
Okay, thank you.
Which is why we would like to have it from you all by June 20th to give us a little under a week to get it incorporated.
Cool.
And then from there, as we've been doing it with other articles, any decisions that you all make amongst yourselves at that meeting, after seeing their changes, we will incorporate into the draft.
Okay.
And hopefully what you all can get us is more or less final. Since we are certainly not the frequency noise experts.
Cool, okay.
Fair enough.
Do we want to put this to rest for this evening, this portion of the discussion, or are we?
Yes, I, I just want to thank Thomas Hastings and his team for, for coming tonight. I'm, I'm sure this is not, uh, it was difficult, and I, I know you're missing your counterparts, but we really appreciate you coming to the table to work with us so that we can get this hopefully put to bed soon. Thank you.
We really appreciate it. And yeah, I think we got some homework. Try to, try again to get those G, the GIS layers, make sure the ones we sent you are hopefully working. Maybe you talk about the, maybe you can give us a sense of the by right, the scale of that.
A scale of how many?
Yes.
Or, okay.
For the, yeah, 120 and a half mile or something similar to that. We'll look at the frequency again, but I think, I think the frequency is, I think it's, I guess, it's, yeah. These are, I'll, I'll look at the list again. I think it's a good list and within the area, I think covers it, but I'll double check.
Well, and I'll just echo those sentiments as well. We really do appreciate you all coming out. I know it's been a, you know, a little, little bit, probably more time than you wanted to dedicate Tuesday evening to, to hanging out with us. But no, we thank you because this is, you know, it's a dialogue that I think up to this point we've not had. So it, I, I believe we're going to come through this with a very productive end product. So, yeah, and thank you all for your time, really definitely appreciate that.
And for those, I guess, the, the non-restrict, I think the things you were looking for, Heather, maybe if you wanted to send us a draft or any language about things that weren't covered in the JALUS, would be happy to look at it.
You mean above the draft ordinance that Berkeley Group has repaired?
Yes, if there was anything you wanted to add or the staff or anything else that you were thinking of, I mean, as you were just, were talking about those sort of, you know, non-restrictive land uses, things that, like you said, outside of Dahlgren area, inside Dahlgren area, outside the gate, those types of developments, if there's something you guys wanted to put into the text, we'd be happy to look at.
I, I don't think that it's something that King George County should be drafting, considering it's, it's Dahlgren's want, you know, what is your compatible growth? What is your want for Dahlgren, you know, that still works within your mission? I think we're kind of looking to you guys to provide that to us.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, me. Um, I also want to say I'd be very interested to hear the perspective of the base for land use outside the gate. What, what kind of quality of life enhancements, MWR, aspects, housing? You know, recreation, what kind of things do, does the base value that, that we might be able to influence with our, our development people?
Mr. Hastings, I know Captain Copeland was unable to come tonight. Do you, would it be acceptable to invite him to maybe June's meeting to discuss? I know he had some items that he wanted to talk about tonight.
There's definitely, yes, I, I think we'll, we'll talk to him about kind of the most appropriate, applicable forum for that. But I think he'll have, have messages to share, will have his messages to share.
Please let him know that he's welcome to speak during your, your time on the agenda at, at any time.
Absolutely, great, yeah.
Great, yes, and I think he's, yeah, like I said, he's very engaged and, and will pass along his messages and, thanks.
Awesome, thank you all.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, just, just to put a word in edgewise, it's not so technical that I get lost in, but I'd like to just express my consideration or my appreciation for your, the work on this. I, I was here about three, four years ago when they started some of this. And one of the most important things that Captain Copeland and previous CEOs have always talked to me about is making sure that the county understands is that it's all about compatible land use. We don't want to slow down the development of King George County and wherever you guys take that. And of course, base mission here, you know, big supporter, lovely, a lot of population that live and work in the county, so we don't want to restrict that either. So hopefully my takeaway on this is really just develop an adaptable, flexible framework where we can have conversations. Because like Mr. Moss was saying, there's no way to predict what they're going to be testing out there. But if we have a conversation and we have a framework for us to get together and talk about those things and find a way, path forward together, then you win, we win, everybody wins. So I appreciate you taking the time and consideration. Hopefully we'll walk away with a great product that we can facilitate further conversations in the future about a compatible development.
Absolutely, and I think that, that's why we're all here, so we really do appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move forward if everybody's ready. Okay, thanks for being patient with us. All right, next up is the use matrix. You should have that in front of you, and then you should also maybe have a little annotated page that shows you how to use it. I'm going to go over it real briefly, just to make sure that everybody can navigate it all right. I know you've had it for a week and you've probably figured it out, but I just want to make sure. So what this matrix contains is really the existing uses that you have now, existing definitions, what we propose to mostly consolidate into or change, and then those new proposed definitions. We also list how those uses are permitted, whether they're by right, by special exception, or not permitted at all. And then we've also included a column there that shows whether or not it will have use standards. And that will be the next thing that we review with you in July. So on the matrix, it says keep or update. That means that you all have use standards for that use currently in your ordinance. We would like to carry those over, update them as necessary. If it says suggested, it's either a use that you've had that we think you should have use standards for, or a use that we're introducing and also should have use standards for. So the basis for drafting the use matrix, we took your individual lists in the current ordinance under each district and made a one-stop shop for what's allowed, what uses you have, and a quick place to find all of that. So half of this is based on state code. It's either defined, allowed, permitted, the way that state code says that we can do that, or it's a use that's required by state code. A good example is a group home or a family home daycare. Another piece of the puzzle here was again to just reorganize some of your existing uses, consolidate. This makes things a little easier on staff, makes things a little easier on the folks in the community. They don't have to say, okay, I'm, I'm going to make a billiard hall. They can just come in for a recreational spot. That's just one loose example there. We also took things into light categories, utilities are together, public uses, maybe some stores, if there were individual types, we, we've lumped those together. And then the third piece of the puzzle here was public engagement and staff direction. So taking some things that we heard during the public engagement process, the survey and the workshop, incorporating that as needed, whether that would be to introduce uses, cut down, same, same goes for staff, just some different things that we've heard and made changes in those regards. So I know this is a little bit tiny on your screen, but you should have this in front of you. So again, just real brief, I'm going to show you what you have in front of you. So all the way to the left, you're going to have your existing uses and definitions. And then those will be lumped into our proposed uses and definitions. Again, just to cut down on what you have. And then from there, at the top, you're going to have each district listed. And down below, you would follow this just like those old-fashioned multiplication tables. And you would say, okay, agriculture and silviculture is allowed in A1 by right. Great, let me see if it's allowed in industrial. It's blank, so it's not allowed. What you also have here, the, in between the district list and the chart itself, is a little legend to tell you what the Bs and Se's mean. Obviously, but B is by right, S, S E is special exception. And I've also added a second legend there to show you why we've color-coded it the way that we have. If it's black lettering, that's as it is now in your current ordinance. If it's a red letter, it's a change. And if it's a teal letter, which is the, the few and far between, that's something that we propose taking away altogether. Instead of changing it from special exception to by right or vice versa, we're saying, don't permit it at all. And then all the way to the right, we have two things. We have that use standards column that I was talking about, that's just simply saying, hey, you're going to have use standards for this. If it's a by right use and you're concerned about it, maybe noise, traffic, hours, anything that you would have concern about, we can address that in use standards. Note here, if there is something here that you see that we have not said, keep or update or suggest, and you want to bring that up, you're, feel free to. We'll get to that at the end, but just because it's not listed now doesn't mean it's off the table. And then lastly, just like in your, your normal drafts that you get, we have editors' footnotes at the bottom that just explain some of our rationale. You have that all the way to the right here. Any questions about how to use this? The final, I won't get too far into this because I know we're, we're all itching to get through this. The final draft of this, of what will go in the actual ordinance that's to be adopted, is very similar to this. I think I sent it, you may have it in front of you, you may not. Basically, what will be removed from this, but will be in the final, is the existing definition and use. That will go. It will only show the proposed use, how it's permitted in each district, and then if it has standards. And instead of saying keep, update, suggest, it will direct the reader to the exact section of the ordinance for those use standards. Naturally, we can't write that now because that article hasn't been written yet. But once it has, which is the next up for review, we will go back and make sure that if biosolid application has some standards, that column will tell the exact section of where to find it.
Can we get this electronically? Do we?
You have it electronically? It was given to you in your packet?
It's in.
Hold on, I can tell you what it is.
One from 10 May?
None of you got a packet?
I didn't get a packet for tonight. I'm, I'm looking off of what we had for 10 May.
No, no, not that. I printed those just for tonight, but you got one before today electronically. No? Yes, it was sent not last Friday, Friday before last. Well, you guys got to let me know.
Um, okay, just to, to handle some panic here on our side. This is a lot to get through. So I think, Heather, Rebecca, you tell me otherwise. I think it would be best, so what, what I planned here to do was to talk about the things that I've earmarked in your printout to discuss here tonight with you. And then I was going to leave the floor open if you all had anything else you want to talk about because it's a lot to get through. So if it's okay with you, I, I feel like we could keep going through the presentation, talk about these big-ticket items that I already know are probably going to need to be discussed. And then unfortunately, you might be on your own for reviewing it next month. And then getting to us with any questions, Heather, Rebecca?
Let me just ask, so how many folks did or did not receive it?
I did not.
You did not? Okay, so, and Mr. Jacorda, you did?
I did.
So it should have been uploaded to your, your Gmail accounts, which you probably, you may have it set up to where when we send you an email to your planning commission, you know, that it alerts your personal email? I know I have mine set up like that. It's not set up.
Oh, well, I, I'm just wondering, since it's the first time for most of us to look at it, could we look at it first? Because it is like, one, it's, I know it sounds, I'm dating myself, I can hardly read it, even with these on. So I'm going to, it's a trust, it's a trust thing. You can tell me there's, you know, UFO information in here. I'm not exactly sure I'd know any different. But I would like to be able to.
Yeah, they were.
That's why I said electronic, I can blow it up for mine.
Right, we, we have selected a few that we know are typical hot topics or that we are proposing some changes. And so I think we can still talk through those tonight. Because you haven't looked at it, we'll have to simplify our talk and give you a little bit more background. But I think we can still talk through those items.
So on 5/20/2022, all of you got an email that says, hello all, here's the upcoming work session agenda. Please let me know if you have trouble viewing. And it has a link, just as in your Gmail. Yeah, because Louis got it and all of you guys are listed on there.
Yeah, I, I don't have it. The last thing I got for was for 10 May.
Have you been receiving your regular planning commission packet?
Up two.
Okay, all right, good, all right. All right, so Louis just replied all with a blank message, so hopefully something's coming through soon. But I do think that we should at least talk about some of these hot items that these ladies have. And I'm sure you guys are familiar enough with these discussion items to move forward tonight.
Okay, all right, so I'm, again, I'm just going to go through, you're going to have a lot. So what we've done here, not too unlike what you have now, we've lumped everything into categories. So you have your agricultural uses first, then your residential, your public, civic, recreational. And then you have your residential, I already said that. Then you have your industrial uses, and then you have what we call miscellaneous. It's just sort of a catch-all for the things that don't always fit neatly into one box. So we're going to go through here, I, again, since you haven't had a chance to review it, I'm going to kind of go step by step, our process, where you might find this, those things. So bear with me as I also navigate through the matrix itself. It might take me a minute, but I just want to make sure that I can show you which page to get to on yours. Okay, can you tell me? So the first one up is family home daycare. This is one of those uses that is, I'm not going to say exactly it is, there are certain elements to it that are required by state code, but it's also just a directive of state code. So basically what the Code of Virginia says for family home daycares is it has two buckets. It has family home daycares that are one to four children and family home daycares that are five to 12. The difference, at bottom line, is that the facilities that are one to four children do not have to be licensed through Code of Virginia. If you're a facility that has five to 12 children, you do need to be licensed. So the typical approach for the Berkeley Group is to, to provide family day, family home daycares as two uses in that similar fashion. Family home daycare, one to four children is by right in anywhere that's a single-family dwelling. And then you can, you can choose how you, that's required by the Code of Virginia. And then we opt to create a second use for those licensed facilities of five to 12 children. And those can be through a special exception, since there's a little, little bit more traffic, could be a little bit more noise, anything that comes with more bodies. Or you can allow those by right. So what we've suggested doing, and again, let me just get to it here.
It is page three of your draft, at the bottom of page three, is daycare, family home, one to four individuals.
Okay, so the way that you all currently have it now is a family home daycare is defined as one to five children, which is a little different than what, again, we typically go with suggesting. So the way that you all have it now is a family home daycare of one to five children is by right in all agricultural, all residential districts. We're proposing to also allow it in RC and the mixed use because we're proposing to allow single-family dwellings there. And as a reminder, if you have a single-family dwelling, Code of Virginia says you have to allow family home. family home daycares for one to four children. That one's pretty, pretty straightforward. That one's not really, not for, for uh, lack of a better description, not really up for discussion there. But the one that we do want to talk through with you all is the breakout of a second use of a family home daycare for five to 12 children. And that's a little bit further down. On page eight. And what we are suggesting is to allow that by right in your agricultural districts and then by special exception in your residential. Now, this is totally up to you. I don't know how many you have currently, if any. Again, state code doesn't necessarily require that these are permitted in a certain way. We, again, just like to add a little bit more control for you because they can, again, have more traffic, um, maybe more employees, that sort of thing. So I'm going to open it up to you and just answer any questions you have first. I can go over anything again.
Uh, was, uh, just wondering, is that a, is that a common practice in other localities?
So again, we, we permit one to five children now. So if we make the threshold four, that's a whole lot of currently permitted in-home daycares that would now require special exception. Or would be legal nonconforming. I'm sorry? It's the state code.
It's the state code, um, definition of the tipping point for when state requires special licensing. So what I would say about your existing ones that are up to five, those would be by the county considered nonconforming, still can continue as is. The concern that I have, if you increase this to five, to keep with what you currently have, you may permit someone who says, well, I'm really just doing, you know, two extra kids. But then later they look at their permit and go, well, I can do five. And they open that up and increase and start doing five and don't realize I need a state license for this five. So that's why I would recommend stick to the state number because that helps everyone know beyond this number, I need other permits.
Might be naive question, uh, adult daycare, is it regulated under the same statute or is that a different? Bag of worms there.
That's going to be group home. Do we have that on?
I think, let me look and see. If we don't have that in the presentation, we can, we can talk about that after this. It's another one of those that is required by.
It is, it's a different, it's a different regulations. It's a different statute.
Yes, state code does address it though, and it will be in your ordinance addressed by state code.
We can talk about that, that after, um, this family home daycare. Any other?
Do we know how many? Five children daycares there are in the county? I mean, how many permits, like a couple dozen?
Um, way more than a dozen. We probably do a dozen a month sometimes. Yes.
Well, my state, oh, yeah, correct.
Well, they can still get a state license for five children. So when we give them what we call a home occupation permit, we write on there limits to five children. They in turn take that, get a business license and a license from the state of Virginia. But I'm, I'm sure that there are some out there that have more than five children per their state license. We just don't know about them.
Didn't change, we just have to follow.
And how do we, how do we handle it now? We just?
Well, we handle everything on a complaint basis. So if I were to receive a complaint that Linda's daycare has 10 children.
Right.
We would pay her a visit.
So it's, it's just like our sign ordinance or?
That's correct.
So we would have to essentially give them a bit of a warning, if you will, say.
Yes, and, and we have had that. The, the difference of our ordinance now is if you have six children, you have to have a commercial facility. Most people don't do a commercial facility for six children. They usually expand to more.
With all the ADA things that are, so I guess, I guess this is one of those things that we talked with when we first started coming through this, right? It's like, we're, we're proposing to correct the language to get it in check with state code. But is it then creating more work for your office and making it correct?
I, I think Rebecca made a, a pretty fair point is they would still be legal nonconforming and it would be in line with the state code. I just wanted you to be aware that should you get complaints, well, I've had five children forever. I stopped doing it for two years. I went back to get a license for the same thing I did two years ago. Now I can't do it.
Got you. Okay. Anybody else?
Well, police officer, if he pulled you over, would say, so what?
Oh, I think part one of, of making a choice here and saying yea or nay is, is one saying, yes, we agree with breaking the mountain to two, which I think I'm hearing yes. And so then the second part to talk about tonight would be, is if you agree with the way that we've permitted the five to twelve children, which again is by right in your ag districts and then by special exception in your residential. Which now, I don't want to confuse you, right now you have one to five children by right, ag and residential. And another, a new piece of state code that's come out in the last year, two years, there is language in there that would allow you, Rebecca, tell me if I get some of this wrong, that would basically allow you to permit five to 12 administratively. You have to put it out there, um, as a notification. If no one comes forward in 30 days with, with.
No good.
Complaint, you, she, staff can do it administratively. So it's sort of a middle ground between letting it be completely by right, up to twelve, up to 12, or requiring that special exception.
Gives the neighbors a chance to.
Correct. So there's a chance it, it would need to go through the full process. But if no one comes forward within 30 days, staff can, can permit it the exact same way they're doing now.
Okay. So it potentially could lessen your workload, maybe.
Well, I, I think, you know, do you want to see a special exception for six children and, and or five children in a daycare out of somebody's home every month on the agenda? At the cost of, I believe, $3,500 to start up.
Right. Thoughts?
Well, I don't know. I mean, what we're doing is trying to conform with.
Right, exactly.
Correct. Yeah, and that's, that's my thought.
And that second piece I just threw out there is a May. So Code of Virginia allows you to consider it. It's not saying that you, you have to permit five to twelve children in that sort of flexible gray area, but, but it's giving you the option. Um, so one would probably beg the question, if that came through code recently, perhaps it was for a reason to lighten, to lighten it up a little bit for these reviews, but I don't know their reasoning.
And there, there's certainly a childcare crisis.
I think anytime you're, you're going to make a change, someone's going to be affected negatively. Unfortunately. But I, I do think, I'm like, like Josh, I think we, uh, I think we should get in line with state, with state regulation.
Yeah.
And go forth in that way.
Do we feel better about, for the five to 12 children, by right and ag, special exception residential? Or this new provision where it would be administrative as long as no one comes forward?
I like.
In a nutshell.
I like to say. Well, but I think we would want it, so would the, would this work law almost like a rezoning where the, the joining property owners should be notified that this is coming up? How, is that how we would notify people?
Yes.
Yes, so we would, you know, have, we would have to create a process that we would notify the owners. Maybe, you know, there's some size limitation of the lot or the house, you know, don't want 12 children in a 1,200 square foot house? Maybe not.
Right.
About a 4,000 square foot house, maybe. In a dedicated area, things like that.
I didn't think of that.
And I, and I'm assuming that the state licensing board has some requirements.
That's where I would, it's not in Code of Virginia for planning, zoning, but I would imagine that for their licensure, there are, just like a health code. I mean, you couldn't, you know, open a restaurant with, with one bathroom that serves 300 people. They would have their own rules that I'm not familiar with. But they would, yes, they would make sure that the size was adequate, facilities were adequate.
So they would, but we wouldn't. Because we've certainly gone on complaints of, of one in particular in which there was a daycare in a basement. There was no ingress egress for fire and rescue. She had too many children in a small space, you know. I, it gives me a little bit of heartburn.
So, so I wouldn't, if I was the zoning official, and I have been, I would put that back to state officials to who licenses. If it's, you know, more, if it's five or more children there, then I would report that to the state for them to inspect and enforce with their rules.
Yeah, I'd say go with, as written, one to four and then five to 12. And if we wanted to do the administrative thing, I mean, I don't know. But people who are legal nonconforming now, fine.
Right, so we would do the administrative process and then we would have to adjust our fee schedule for the administrative process. I think it would be fair for them to spend $3,500 if they're not doing the public hearing, et cetera.
Yeah, that, that's a fair point, that for that notification, you still want to be reimbursed for those notifications that you're sending to adjacent landowners. And, and then the full fee doesn't kick in unless.
They get.
You get things back and then you say, okay, we've got to go to public hearing.
Yeah.
All on board?
I, I think. I think that's fair. Any further discussion? I mean, it gets us in, in line with state regs, but it also gives the neighbors a voice, so.
Okay. And then just really quickly to touch on group home, it's just, let me see. It should be the next page.
The life care? Page eight or?
It should be page eight, give or take. Getting there. Six, page six. Looks like it's going to be the bottom of the page. This is another one of those, you're, you're mostly doing it correct, but just where we're adding single family dwellings into your resort community and your mixed use district. We're proposing to add those by right, um, required by the Code of Virginia, that anywhere that's single family is permitted, so is a group home. And this would for the, for what you mentioned is adult daycare. So again, not a big change here. You're already basically on par. But where we added single family dwellings to, uh, resort community and mixed use, we would want to make this match. Any questions on that one? As you're reading, this just makes me, I'm just going to remind you, as you're reading, some of these will be this straightforward, um, just, just matching state code. And we've made a note there to let you know if it's, if it seems strange, and it's state code required, it's there in your editor's notes.
So just so I understand, so Code of Virginia requires that these be allowed where single family dwellings are permitted, e- even when it's a business function?
Correct.
Really?
What about if they're not living there? You know, like, there's adult daycare where I drop off an adult and pick them up at the evening versus someone who needs 24 hour care within a home. I think they are separated.
reside, yes.
So that, and that's, that Code of Virginia statute conveys, no matter what the zoning may be, A1, A2 residential, it's, it's wherever single family dwelling homes are allowed?
Correct, which is how it ended up in that resort community and mixed use.
Got you, okay. That's interesting.
It is. It's kind of like, I guess, a lot of those communities have, you know, they have a lot of strict, do's and don'ts, and what they allow and what they don't allow.
Right.
So I guess the state code supersedes any, any, any rule that they may have.
Like a homeowner association.
Right, like say if you're 55 and older, you can't have so many.
Right, right, right.
So in terms of adult daycare, that's not covered in this group home, that is for residents. We do have another use, life care facility that is graduating up in, into more care. It does, that also talks about residents. We could expand that if you wanted, um, to include just day facilities. The concern there becomes if there's a particular area where you only want it to be a day facility and not be able to expand to additional care in the future. Otherwise, we may need to introduce a separate use just for adult daycare if you feel like that's a need in your community.
How would?
Childcare, non-residential, working hours, respite. We've. Brad, please tell us, yeah.
Do you, do you have a, a use now that you've been putting it under?
Our daycare definition?
Okay. Okay, yeah. We'll look back at it.
Because I, I think there's certainly a need for daycare facilities more to just, just the elderly. I mean, some adults with special needs need care during the day, things of that nature.
Okay, we'll mark that for a change. Any other comments, questions, discussion there? That one should be pretty easy for us to go back through.
That's just a surprise. It's one of those kind of.
Is there, is there a, an idea for how you'd like to see those permitted? By right in certain areas, do you require special exceptions for them now?
I can't ever remember one coming before us.
So right now, it seems like the daycare that it would maybe be modeled after.
I'm sorry, yeah.
It does say, okay.
Daycare center does include adults. We did retain that. So it, it's still covered in the daycare center. We would not need to add. Your current ordinance, and we carried it over. If you want to look at page 17 at the bottom, almost.
And I would say the big change here are, are two things. Number one, we're suggesting to allow it by special exception in mixed use districts. And we're suggesting to remove it and not permit it at all in your industrial light and then what your resort community. Otherwise, it's, it's as is now. Special exceptions in your ag and your R1 and R2. And then you would be by right in R3, C1 and C2. I know that writing is so small.
And, and the reason for removing it from industrial is just to maintain the integrity of your industrial, to, to make sure you do get those industrial uses there.
Does that address what, what the need, okay, is that good as is? Okay. All right, any questions there on group home, this part of daycare, family home daycare? Okay. So next up, we'll go to accessory dwellings, which should be up close, maybe page four or five. I'm taking a shot in the dark. I don't have it in front of me. And basically, what we've done here is we've changed the definition so that the, an accessory dwelling can either be a standalone unit. It can be in an accessory structure, so a detached garage or detached, um, mother-in-law suite, et cetera. Or it can be attached to the primary structure. And then we recommend to, um, allow it by right in a couple of extra districts. And these moves are both to, um, help with affordability and availability.
Page four.
Page four. And I want to say that right now you have a few different definitions, as you can see, that we're putting into this dwelling accessory. Again, just pairing down what you have, making it easier for both, uh, the community and for staff. And so most of this, we had, there was a very specific definition. Um, you'll see at the top there that was permitted with a special exception. But overall, what you all have now that speaks to accessory dwellings are permitted by right. Um, and then we, of course, have added to, or add, suggest adding to resort community and mixed use, other places where you would have dwellings that could potentially offer. Other places where you would have dwellings that could potentially offer you know, a mother in law suite, an attached, a basement apartment, those sorts of things. And these would come with youth standards. Sizes, where they would be located. I'm sorry.
We're in a, I'm in a subdivision that has rules that don't allow it. This wouldn't overrule that.
No, it wouldn't.
But keep in mind you approve a new subdivision, thirty thirty lots by right now become sixty lots.
I was gonna ask, okay.
Homes by right.
So.
No preliminary plan, no, those sorts of things.
So I know, Ben, again, I'm sorry. A two, you got a two acre lot, you got a house on it. Can somebody come in and put another one on there?
Currently, no.
Right, but with this, with that. Without. Yeah, without.
Subdividing, right. This would be an accessory dwelling, which would be a secondary dwelling.
Would we have to go back in and put something in to cover maximum size of a?
I think that you should, and I think that you should think about, you know, presidential lakes, for example, those are pretty small lots. Are they where you want to see a secondary um dwelling?
Or how many secondary dwellings, tertiary dwell dwellings? I mean, is there a limit there?
Is there a size limitation, you know, proportionate to the the current house, you know, proportionate to the lot size? You know, some lots in presidential lakes are are large lots, some of them are very small.
I I like the idea of allowing secondary dwellings. But I do think we need to establish minimum lot size and ma- and minimum or maximum square footage.
See, in my, in my head, we're gonna have a bunch of people that put little Amish buildings on their lot and rent them to people. You know, I mean, like tiny home things. I'm not kidding you. I mean, I've seen people start. So I mean, I think we need to put restrictions on renting. You know, that these should be family members, like immediate family members or something like that, so that we're not getting, you know, little little like carney villages all over the county. I mean, you know, you you can see it, I mean, and.
You laugh, but we get calls every day for Conex boxes, tiny homes. These Lowe's packages. I mean, people are very interested on on finding affordable way to live.
Like rooms and all that, yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, you figure if you've got a two acre lot and you're you can allow that, you can fit a lot of ten by eighteen Amish buildings on one and that's you know what I mean? I'm just saying, I think you.
I wouldn't even care if they rented it if we just allowed one.
So something like that could be in the youth standards, you know, one per primary dwelling. A size limit, sorry, go ahead.
And are they single bedroom, three bedroom homes? I mean, how how big? If you could put a square footage size and somebody can still say I can fit three bedrooms in there.
Well, conversely, how does that, how does that complement or compatibility wise, how does it fit with the Bay Act with regards to septic sewer, like, you know, because we do perk tests for X number of bedrooms, right? So what do you do with when you're adding, to your point, like, three more bedrooms in a two hundred fifty six square foot tiny home, right?
So I think that's a twofold question is, are we going to allow them to tap into their current drain field? Or are they going to be required to put in a separate drain field? But regardless of whichever route you go, it will still have to be reviewed by the health department for compliance, for compliance.
Even now, any bathroom outside of your dwelling needs to be approved by the health department, like if you were to put a bathroom in your garage.
Okay, let me, let me put that into another perspective then for efforts where the proposed secondary home, the primary dwelling is on public water and sewer. How would that work for a water sewer open?
They would have to connect. If you are within the area of public water and sewer, you would have to.
Be a separate connection? Or could they tap into the existing primary connection?
That would be something we would have to regulate either through our ordinance or through um service authorities guidelines. But there is also, let's say, the main house was built thirty years ago and there was capacity then, but now there's not. We can't deny them um the ability to build because we don't have capacity. They would then have the right to put in a well in a separate.
Dude, this seems like it would require
Maybe it's a topic for another day.
I I think that the ladies from Berkeley have kind of heard our concerns and will implement this during the standards pro- product, but as far as the zoning classification, there is no classification which you want to prohibit a second dwelling.
Well.
Think, you know, with an aging population, you know, a lot of folks have you know, a parent, say a surviving parent who they want to move in with, but parents still wants a little bit of independence.
And we don't want the parents too close.
Yeah. They don't want to be too close. But, I mean, I'm just listening to the conversation and it's like one issue after another that we would have to address. I I think it gets a good idea for a lot of folks, but the opportunity to abuse it and turn it into something that at least I'm not thinking about certainly is there, so we'd have to write something pretty tight to you know.
Or you could also, it would even be a step up from our current current ordinance, it's only allows accessory, you know, manufactured home for farm tenants. By that's the only by right. Then there is the special exception for um immediate family members to have a manufactured home for reasons of hardship, that's a special exception. So you could maybe loosen that up, just as you can have an accessory dwelling unit by special exception along with some youth standards, and that could also give the opportunity to provide conditions on a case by case basis.
Yeah, I don't want to roll, I don't want to roll an RV in there. Tires off of it and call it a, an additional dwelling unit.
That wouldn't meet the merit to the building code, just so we know.
I'm sorry.
It wouldn't meet the building code.
So, and I, when we talk, when we talk about manufactured things.
It would be a trailer.
Yeah.
A single, yeah.
Which is, you know, similar to what we've seen.
Which is, well, that's all we would allow now for that reasons of hardship. I would think just allowing it by special exception without that provision would still give someone the opportunity to do a stick built you know, ex- small home or accessory home, but would also give you the opportunity to review it as instead of it just being by right that would just um be reviewed administratively.
And another thought too is, you know, right now we have said by right in the ag districts and the R districts. And we can scale that back to say it's by right in the A one and A two districts and maybe it is special exception um in the A three, because from what we've seen, those are a little smaller lots and then same for R one, R two, R three. Those could be special exceptions that you, you know, would would come before you and you consider those if if you wanted to do it that way.
I would still want to have some guidelines in place to give us something to hang our hat on when we say no.
Right, because there's no way for us to enforce that that is in fact their parent that is living there. Um, but we could say you have a maximum two person occupancy, but then what happens when your children move in and now they have a baby? You know, it, we we have to set some parameters, but also make sure that they're enforceable for our staff.
To just kind of going back again to the genesis of this, is this a request that comes up a lot?
Yes, this is a request that comes up quite a bit. Um, we have a lot of people who um want to age in their their place, they want to give their home to their children, but they're not ready to leave yet. Um, we have people that want to bring their parents home or their college kid can no longer is getting out of college but can't afford his first house. You know, just that that awkward in between phase is is what they're looking for, as well as we don't have a median income of household in in King George County. You either live in a three hundred plus thousand dollar house or you live in a mobile home park. Um, and that is certainly an issue in King George. And this is one way to um help with that.
And what we've seen in other communities too is um they're utilizing this, as she mentioned, for some affordable housing. And also for those who maybe want to remain in King George, maybe they're aging, but they're no longer working, they're retired and affording their large piece of property is is getting too much. They can put an accessory dwelling there, rent the accessory dwelling without dividing the property. So you're also in this way preserving some of those larger parcels and letting people remain on those parcels.
So that's minimum acreage requirement? Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Because the other thing is, you know, we're dying for teachers. A teacher that's making forty two thousand dollars a year cannot afford to live in this county. That is one way that an aging person would want to rent a one bedroom, one bath small home to a teacher or a police officer or some other public servant type thirty five, forty thousand or or a base worker. Those are just the commonly used examples of workforce housing. This is one way that we would be able to accommodate those people.
Have the first wicket right out of the gate, you gotta have a minimum five acres, whatever.
Yeah, I think I think it's what Mr. Kendrick said in the very, very beginning of the conversation. Uh, is to set some parameters as far as sat- lot size. Ain't going from there, yeah.
So to reach some sort of consensus on this, we we want to allow it with some standards that talk about lot size. Maybe um how many people would be living in it? Do you want to play with that idea?
Yeah.
Lot size, structure size.
Building size, okay. Do you want to talk about building size in a static way or in relation to the primary structure? Almost like a ratio, sort of like they would do commercial to residential and mixed use or something. So so ultimately, you're not getting an accessory structure that's the same size as your primary structure.
So I'm not thinking in terms of letting people build guest houses on a two acre lot that's as big as the first house. But a one bedroom, one maximum occupancy, two people.
Yeah, I think it'd be more static because otherwise you could have a six thousand square foot house. Well, I'll just build a three thousand square foot.
Not with that, but then we're gonna end up with three thousand square foot, one bedroom, one bath, a whole bunch of office and sewing rooms.
It could also be one of those, I don't have it off the top of my head because it's eight thirty, but um, a lesser than situation, so nine hundred square feet or twenty five percent of the primary structure, whichever is smaller, to to allow you to go maybe a little bit bigger, but you're still not, you know, matching or outweighing your primary structure. That will take some playing around with, um, but that's a way to give to give you not too little and to not make it a little dollhouse, but also to not end up if if what I'm, I mean, I'm not, I mean, we drove by, but to get these big um huge homes here and then you end up with a, an accessory dwelling unit that could be, you know, someone else's whole house.
Right.
So just to give you a window there.
I know, I do think that there's also a request from, you know, I own a hundred acres, I have a big house and I want to move my mom in, but she doesn't want to live in a dollhouse. She wants a fifteen hundred square foot house, you know, just kind of balancing the scales a little bit across the board.
That may be a way to do that, so we can play with that idea. Aside from some just base standards for any of them overall, do you all feel like you still want to view through a special exception accessory dwelling units in those certain districts? A three, R one, R two, R three?
I think the the R districts might be pushing it.
I think so too. I think because we're talking about, you know, like presidential lakes, for instance, where you, you know, you're talking half acre lots and.
Okay, so not permitting at all in R three?
I I think, I'm sorry, Mr. Caldwell, please, I.
Yeah, I I said what I had to say, I I don't know.
I mean, I think, I think there should be a minimum acreage size, but then I go back to how much extra work is he gonna create? So I mean, if we put, we certainly would want to limit occupancy, but that's gonna require somebody to go in and verify, right? So there's extra work.
Now, occupancy, we do issue a certificate of occupancy with every new dwelling. So that is an enforceable measure. Um, however, if I show up and they only have one person there and the rest of the family is not there, you know, I can't come after hours and on the weekends and things like that.
Or they're having a party when you get there.
Right, or they're just here for the weekend or, yeah.
Which that would be the case for any dwelling, not just if you're accessories.
Right.
I don't know, um.
But you all know, you're certainly the community expert, so if we, let's just say we were to play with a five acre minimum and most of what's in R three wouldn't even meet that, then there would be there's no merit, there's no, there's no benefit to to permitting it at all in R three.
Right, I I think I think A one and A two are gonna be where, A one, A two, but five acre. I mean, and I'm just throwing five acre minimum out as an arbitrary number, but I mean, if you, if you just think about it from the standpoint of not being right up on your neighbor or not potentially impacting your neighbor in another way by having another right away, additional traffic, you know, it it is still one of those things where and I guess also this may go back to as I'm, as I'm thinking about this, do we want to limit it to which districts it would be allowed in, right? I mean, like, we've got we've got areas that are, you know, earmarked for conservation or, you know, less density, like you know, Shiloh district, for instance, right? Do we want to limit it to just certain areas or certain areas within the um comp plan?
I think that Shiloh, for example, is one of the most commonly requested areas because they are larger lots um in which they want to bring home mom or or their college kid or something of that nature. And and I, I think those are where you're gonna be less cumbersome on your neighbors.
And I'm just saying, I don't know. I mean, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there just as things to consider, right?
But again, I'm a developer, I go out in Shiloh and I develop a A two piece property by right, two acre lots. Without that, if that size requirement, we could potentially double the amount of.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, 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 yeah. I think, yeah. Yeah, I think we, I think.
Where's the question? So let's say we put the restriction of the the requirement of having five acres, will will those with lesser be have the ability to request a, an exception?
We, we can write that into the the standards. We we've done that before, that, you know, if you're meeting all of these then you're by right. If you're going to be beyond that, then you request a special exception and and communities have done that for if you want to request a second accessory or you don't feel like you should have to meet the size requirement or, you know, whatever the case may be, we can put that into the standards.
I like that, okay.
Okay. So just one more confirmation before we move on. As far as the way it's drafted now for how it's permitted and where what do we want to change? Or is it still? Here, I can, I can read it out to you. So right now, what we're suggesting is that in all of the ag and all of the residential, it would be by right. In your resort community and your mixed use, it would be a special exception. Let's take it piece by piece, ag districts.
I think.
Good with it? By right in all three of them, even even A three?
I wouldn't do it in R three.
A three.
A, A three, oh, okay, pardon me.
Yeah, we've got just a tiny little bit of A.
Okay, so A three sounds good. So then the residential districts, I feel like someone else has said R three may not be suitable. So do we want to nix it from R three?
I think so, I believe.
And still, still okay with by right in R one and R two, or do you want to see that as a special exception?
But we're still gonna put minimum lot sizes.
Right.
Okay.
And just, we can, I I feel cautious to say this because we don't have. we have a finite timeline, as you mentioned, but at the next work session, when we're all together and we're looking at the U standards, based on how we've drafted the U standards, if you feel comfortable with them as they are, then you can say, yep, let's leave it by right. If they're still not enough or you're just not loving them or feel that confident in them, maybe we can go back to the drawing board and say, okay, you can have them in R1 and R2, but it has to be a special exception. You might, I guess what I'm getting at, maybe you need to see the drafted U standards before you can make that decision, and that's okay. If you want to leave them by right now in R1 and R2 and then make a final determination after you've seen the standards, we can do that.
One other thing I think that we should consider before we move on is private roads versus VDOT roads. So a lot of your agricultural districts are often running on private roads, private gravel roads. Is that a game changer for you?
And the issue's going to be traffic, right? And wear and tear on the road, and that's always a, so we're subject with a lot of shared roads for homeowners, so. I don't know, it goes back to Mr. Kendrick's point. It's like the reverse onion, right? Peel it and there's more and more layers under it, so.
So places like the Hugger Track, you know, those are large 10-acre lots, gravel roads.
Gravel roads, right. Yeah, you're right. And right now, like, most of them only have two or three houses on them, but you'd potentially be doubling that.
Yes, I'm certainly not envisioning a totally separate road to the alternative dwelling unit.
But just like, like some, she mentioned the Hugger Track, like, so like Abingdon Retreat goes off 218. It's just a gravel road. And there's one, two, three, four, five houses on it, which now you're talking about potentially 10 houses on it on a pretty narrow little non-VDOT gravel road. You know, because they all...
If they chose, choose to do then...
Yeah.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't limit people to how many cars they have or how many drivers they have in their house.
Yeah, thank goodness.
Talking about adding, you know, I guess I'm envisioning a limited. I'm not seeing it as another house. If we keep it relatively small, we make sure the lot's big enough to handle it. Yeah, I can see your concern, but...
I think Heather's point there, without a minimum lot size, if you've got A2 and you got a thirty-acre or thirty, thirty-lot subdivision, suddenly it becomes sixty like that, you know.
Yeah, it's got to have limitations on it to prevent that.
Because that's just, you know, that's a developer's dream, right? You'd sell it that way. It's easy.
Yeah, I could see a developer coming in and adding an additional dwelling unit to every house and selling it as a potential rental or...
Right, right.
Move your adult kid in or something, but she's getting those kind of requests now anyway.
Yes. So...
Size, you know, nine-hundred, a hundred and twelve-hundred tops will keep both the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
The gravel road's not a concern within the size limitations.
Not a concern for me, no.
I guess you're right. You...
Choose to do it.
Yeah, people choose to live there, so yeah, I guess so.
Yes.
One big question about the homeowners association, saying this was, was by right. Then HOA forms prohibit accessory dwellings. Can they?
Sure.
Yes, they can, and it's whichever is more restrictive. We don't enforce HOA, but if they say you can only have a blue house, unless they're taking you to court, it's up to them to enforce.
Yep.
New HOA.
A new one, yes.
Subdivision. Subdivision, but then... With the new HOA.
Yep. Or even an existing subdivision, you know, they can change their HOA laws to prohibit that, yes.
Safe to move on from this topic? So I feel like this next one will take, it will be the next biggest discussion, and then we have a few more after this. I don't want you to get too hopeful quite yet. But if we can just get through this, the rest should be pretty, pretty easy breezy. So the next big thing is home occupations. What you all have now is just one home occupation, and it's on page... Close to where you are. Maybe seven, seven? Page seven. So the way you all have it now is you have one home occupation use and one definition, and it's allowed by right in A1, A2, A3, R1, R2, and R3. And right now, in your current definition, it gives some specific examples about what a home occupation might be. And I don't know if you have any U standards now, but what we're basically suggesting and what we typically do is we break out home occupations into two classes, a lesser and a greater. The lesser would be Class A, and that's basically those home occupations. It's only the person that lives there. There's, from the outside, you would never know that there's a business there. There's no signage, no additional employees, no customers, no delivery, no heavy deliveries, I should say, typical UPS or FedEx coming up and down the road. And then your greater class would be Class B, which would allow for onsite customers, some additional employees that don't live at the dwelling, some signage, a greater presence of a business from the outside looking in. This is how we typically do it after talking with staff. King George County may benefit from a third option that's more or less geared to those contractors, plumbers, that are out in your ag districts, sort of away from everyone. They don't have a lot of neighbors. They're not probably going to bother anyone, but we don't want to require they get a special exception because they fall in that category of, I'm a plumber and I have an additional employee that's coming. Or, this is a poor example, I sell rock, and so I have people coming onsite, customers, to look at the rock. The way that we have it drafted now, those folks would require a special exception because they're of the greater class. They have more employees and more people coming. But here in King George County, I guess the question is begged of, if they are out on their own, sort of in no man's land, do they need to have a special exception? But if you take that away and allow it by right, somewhere in a more populated neighborhood that's of the greater class could do it by right. So again, maybe bringing in that third option.
Would that third option have it, building this a shop, like a...
Yes.
Or carpenter area?
And I gave you all an example, and I know you haven't looked at it, but just want to bear in mind for when you do your homework. There's an attachment there, I can't remember the letter, but West Moreland County does what's called a rural home business, I think, small business. And that's sort of what we've brainstormed and what may be suitable for you. It's sort of a meat in the middle. So it's not someone that's drawing a lot of attention and could be disruptive, but is having a little bit more activity than just someone that's making bracelets and putting them in bags and selling them on Etsy.
Yeah, I think the...
Attachment F is the draft.
Type of business that comes to mind is a hair salon, where you may have a detached building. They have maybe a couple of beauticians in there doing their work and have maybe five or six clients come in at one time. That's the type of business that comes to mind when you...
That's a good example. So the way we have that now, let's just take that as an example. The way we have that now, because it would have onsite customers, it would have more employees that don't live in the house. Anywhere, we have this drafted, except for C1 and C2, you would require a special exception. But let's say...
To ten customers.
And limited to ten customers, which for a hair salon or some other similar, it's a pretty, that's a pretty wide range, but that number could be played with. But I guess what we're wondering is, if you're in A1, you can't see your neighbor, and your neighbor can't see your two hair salon customers, is it too burdensome to require a special exception? Which this one may be not, maybe we can't answer that one tonight. It may take reading the West Moreland example just as, as another idea. And before I forget to mention it, we're suggesting to allow home occupation Class B in C1 and C2 because of the amount of non-conforming homes that you have. It's not something we typically do, but here in King George, you have so many, so many dwellings that are commercial.
Actually, yeah, I think that's a great idea. I'm just, I think, again, echoing Mr. Kendrick's sentiments about the last issue. And then maybe asking the question too about the West Moreland one is, how tightly written are the parameters about the types of businesses that could go into an area like that?
So we were brainstorming on the way. I think it would take a little bit more, but for the, for the third class, that if we were to do it that way, we would probably want to put in the U standards either examples of businesses or specific businesses. In the West Moreland example, they write specific businesses that would be permitted there. They're on the heavier side, not, I don't know what's, I don't have it memorized, but plumbing, contracting, maybe even car repair, some of those heavier things, not so much a hair salon. So we can go that route. We can suggest something, you know, businesses such as XYZ, or you can say only these businesses. There are pros and cons to both.
I'm laughing. I'm thinking about a business that's fairly new on Jersey Road. It's a crowd.
Yeah, I thought the same thing. Like, how is that just there? Yeah. Well, and another, I thought of that and then it got out of my head. And then I knew one guy that lived in a county in the state of Virginia where they didn't have any ordinances, and there are a couple still, and he was a one-man, heavy metal recycler. So he would get old computers and stuff from schools and would melt them in his yard. And I'm like, your neighbors must love you. You've got this constant toxic fire going, you know, separating out metals from things. But yeah, it's like, we got to kind of make sure we don't have that, you know, no toxic slurry or weird things on, yeah.
So for staff, it's kind of, I'm a small business, I'm just starting. I can't afford the industrial business startup.
Right.
But I got a couple guys that work for me, and I got a couple van, work vans, and I got a shop out back. And I got twenty acres. Am I hurting anybody? And on the flip side, I run a tax business out of my house, and I have one person that comes over and crunches numbers with me.
Right.
That's a class, I think, A, home occupation. Nobody knows they're there. It's one extra car every day. Again, I'm not hurting anybody. You know, kind of, we want to, we've talked about being small business friendly. You know, the hope is that they start small, they'll grow.
Right.
They will then invest in a brick and mortar in King George County. So I think, you know, setting those thresholds to provide room for growth, but also making sure that we're not getting our commercial taxes in the agricultural district as well. We want to make sure that once they get to a certain size that they need to...
I mean, and think about how much of that stuff has proliferated as a result of the pandemic, right? So, you know.
Okay.
And I, I mean, like you pointed out, there's a whole lot of people out there doing it illegally, and nobody's complaining.
Right.
And we are a complaint-based operation. So Joe's Plumbing, that's had his business there for years, and he's just grown a little bit, and nobody's ever paid any mind to him. You know, is he really what we want to consider illegal?
So for tonight, if we could, is it, are we okay with leaving it the way that it is now? And then at your next work session, review that West Moreland example? And if it speaks to you, we can change it and add that as a third option here. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
As for how they're permitted now, again, the greater class is special exception in all ag and all residential. Do we want to change that tonight or leave that the way it is?
Where...
And that's more employees, onsite customers.
We'd change it to what you have, Stephanie, the, in the red, you would change it to...
So that would be, yes. So again, the way you have it now, you just have one home occupation. There aren't basically two levels.
Right.
So this would allow you all, for all ag and all residential districts, if someone has a home occupation that's more than themselves and has any customers, it would come through as a special exception.
Ms. Hall, workload?
Is it overburdensome to the people though?
So currently, we do allow our home occupation to have one person outside the home to come and work for them. And I think that we would like to keep it that way. But I do think that there should be a step-two by right with some standards. You know, I'm cutting hair, I got five acres, I'm seeing no more than ten people. Do we want to make them get a special exception? I'm kind of thinking you guys don't. And then third, you know, Joe's Plumbing, ten trucks, a huge industrial, you know, barn out back. He's got fifty acres.
Two-hundred-and-fifty old water heaters, right?
But you could, you know, do that by special exception. You can set parameters, hours of operation. You know, I think that you can kind of set some standards to meet those thresholds. Is my humble opinion.
Do you require business licenses from activities like that?
All of them, yes, sir. If they make over, yes. Once you make over a certain amount of money, and I want to say it's twenty-five hundred, but don't quote me on that, commissioner revenue requires you to have a business license. Even, like, we get a lot of home occupations because I have five rental homes and I collect rent. They're like, I don't really run a business, I just collect my rent money. So they get a fifty-dollar permit and a business license so that they can file their taxes. It's a pretty simple process.
Do you prefer three groupings?
I do. I think that we have a need for it. It's something that we constantly, you know, where we're classified as not business friendly, it's difficult in King George. I think this is one of those things that will help.
Okay.
Everyone on board with that? Okay, so this is what we'll do. We'll make, I guess, a third group and give this special attention when you all review it, since it'll basically be brand-new and we don't even have a handle on ourselves quite yet. So I can't really talk through what it would look like. But we'll go ahead and make a third level, leave the allowances as they are now. But if you, if you feel like you want to change those from special exception to by right after you see that third one, we can certainly change them. But for now, we'll leave those two as-is until you have the full picture in front of you. Okay, anything else on home occupation? Okay, so the next thing up should be pretty easy. This is public use. It's going to be your next category down, maybe page... Ten, eleven? Really guessing. It's okay. Rebecca's fine. Eleven. Wow, that's a good guess. Okay. So for this one, this is a simple ask. The way we're doing it now is public use is a use. Emergency management services facility is a use. Public park recreation is a use. Would it, would you all like to just have any public uses combined into one thing? They're permitted the same right now. So it would basically be any King George facility would be under one use. Instead of breaking it out, you know, fire and EMS would be one use. Government building, library, town hall would be one. Public park would be another.
Would they all be like, so using that example, like, fire, rescue? Would they all have to be like county? Okay, yeah, you know what I'm trying, sorry, the words are not coming out as easy right now.
Ideally, public use would all be county-owned.
That's what I meant.
And ran facilities. On the flip side, we did hear from, you know, Davenport Rails to Trails, you know, that is not a publicly-owned facility. That's privately-owned, and I think that we should have a differentiation for that.
So right now, I'll just read the public use definition says, use of, use of land exclusively for public purposes by any department or branch of the federal government, Commonwealth or any political subdivision, public authority, or any combination thereof. So federal, state, county.
Okay. And I guess where I was going, so not utilities, right? Utilities wouldn't fit into that.
We have that as its own utility major, which is in the same... We have that as its own utility major, which is in the same category, but a little further down.
Okay. Seems pretty non-passionate.
This one's pretty straightforward, but just wanted to touch base and make sure that.
So it sounds like add those all together as one? Was that the consensus?
That's the recommendation, right?
This isn't up there, but Heather, you reminded me. Does the trail that keeps getting brought up, does that need to be a use on its own?
So the Rails to Trails is unusual in the fact that it is a long, slender piece of property that runs essentially from one side of the county to the other that is owned by a person at the county. So these people go and get permission to walk, bike, et cetera. The gentleman who were here tonight, you know, they have teams that come in, keep it clean, et cetera. And they've recently, you know, kind of gained a little traction, especially with COVID. People are using it more often. Now they want to, you know, camp with Boy Scouts. They want to add additional parking, but because it's a legal nonconforming use, that any new additions to that would be an expansion of a legal nonconform, illegal nonconform use.
It runs through several zoning districts, some which allow.
Facility by special exception, some that don't allow it at all. So there's, yeah, it's complicated.
Historically, it was the railroad that took employees who lived in Fredericksburg to Dalgrin. And then the railroad stopped running. In most places, they pulled up the actual railroad bed, the tracks and such. There's some places where it's still there. But if I remember correctly, don't you have to buy a membership to it, or can somebody?
I think it's free.
You have to buy it.
You have to buy it now? Yes, yes.
Yeah, and it runs through some interesting areas, like the gun range.
Yes, and in people's backyards.
And in people's backyards.
Yes, which, if you remember, is very contentious once upon a time. I think it's kind of settled over the years, but.
So I guess my question with that is, Stephanie brought it up, is do we even have a... Is that even something we even have as a planning commission? Should we even weigh in on that, I guess? It's legal nonconforming, and typically anything else that's legal nonconforming, we don't layer on top of that additional or modified uses, right?
Well, that and most properties are not 20-foot wide. I'm not sure of the measurements. But that is what we're working with, a very slender piece of property.
Yes, you don't, exactly. You don't have standoffs, right? You don't have anything you can't, right?
But.
Setbacks. You can't have any.
Somebody new might want to come in tomorrow that has a very good public recreation facility. Where do you want to see that, et cetera? You know, I know that the Rails to Trails is just one example, and it's a difficult zoning hurdle, no doubt, because it is very unusual. But I don't want to be so focused on that one property that we forget about the other ones, too.
So I think what would be best for knowledge's sake and tonight's time, we have uses in here that are for recreation. So what we can do is go back and maybe try to look at a couple of localities that have these sorts of trails and see what they do, how they do, if they do, and give that to you all so you can look at it at your next meeting. But we've not put it in any ordinances that I know of. But, I mean, I live in Roanoke. We have greenways all over the place. They're through yards, so it happens. I don't, but I don't know how it's typically handled, so we'll go back to the drawing board on this one. But other recreational areas, parks, whether for the public or for a subdivision or a community, those are accounted for in here. I don't want you to think that recreation altogether is not in here. But is that fair? I know I'm the one that brought it up, but.
Yeah.
I just feel like we heard it at the workshop. We heard it in the survey. I'm sure it was the same folks. But it will likely come up again, so maybe we just want to get a concrete, you know, answer and direction for what makes the most sense.
See how wrong that is?
Sure, yeah.
Greenways, those are public authorities.
They're public, but they're through, I was just, I don't want to get sidetracked. I was just on one two days ago that goes through someone's farm. So I don't know. It happens. I don't know, though, how it happened, so we'll see.
Here's one, here's one. Hop Yard. Hop Yard's building all these houses right along the trail, right on the north side of a boat ramp.
Right.
That's part of the development, though.
It is. It's part of the development. However, it was public access. I'm envisioning a restriction in a very near, near future where they're going to restrict only residents only to a public.
So for Hop Yard, for example, that was part of the old proffer laws. And they proffered to build a boat ramp and give it to the county. The county in turn said, we don't want to manage this. So we got, it was Gamit and Lynn Fisheries. It's now DWR, and they now own, operate, and it is a public boat ramp. It goes through Hop Yard, but those roads in Hop Yard are going to be state-maintained, public roads. So there is no way that they could.
Restrict it.
Restrict it. Now, the trail may say only to residents, things of that nature, because they did proffer to build a nature trail connecting the different sections. And that's not uncommon, that that's private use. You're welcome.
Okay, there are about five or six, there are about five or six other uses that I would really like to touch base on if we can push through, if everyone's okay.
Stay focused.
Stay focused, folks. Stay with me. I'm going to keep you.
Minute per topic.
Okay, so the next one, again, should be pretty easy. This is on page 12. Telecommunications facilities. We haven't changed anything here, but what we want to ask you all here in the county, are there residential areas where these might be suitable? Do you want to open that up, or do you want to leave it as is now, which is they're allowed an A1, A2, C1, C2, and I1 with a special exception?
And I will take the rap for opening this can of worms, because my thought was, you know, Hop Yard, for example, they have large, open space areas, and they could possibly meet those 400-foot setbacks away from the houses and serve a development such as that. So is that something you want to consider, where we prohibited before? Still through special exception?
I mean, before last year, I never would have thought that was a passionate issue, but obviously it is. So I think, I think it's, I don't know why not. I mean, special exception.
All residential districts, or is it just certain ones?
I think if you've got the setbacks, you should be able to, right, we're gonna, it's special exception. So if there's, if there's public outcry about it, we'll know.
It's safe to say A3, no, there's not enough room, right?
A3 or R3?
Either.
There's none.
Enough room, enough space.
Well, the example she gave is Hop Yard, and that is R3.
Okay.
And has huge contracts of.
Okay, so we want to add special exception for R1, R2, R3. And do we want to go ahead and round out and say A3? That would be all ag and all residential. Okay.
But keep the standard.
Keep the standard. Yes, yep.
Keep the what?
The standards, the 400-foot setback or whatever it may be, but.
Okay. All right, moving on. Maybe, uh-oh. Right on the dot. Okay. Next up is brewery, distillery. This is another one that hopefully is pretty, pretty cut and dry. So what we've done is changed from just brewery to add microbrewery or distillery. And let me just pull it up and refresh my memory here. So the way that we are suggesting it now is that a microbrewery would be no more than 1,000 barrels, and a brewery or distillery would be between 1,000 and capped at five. Your current definition now for breweries is that it doesn't exceed 15,000 barrels. So we're really cutting down here. Do you want to keep the threshold you had? Are you okay with bringing it down? I don't know if there are breweries here now.
How did we come with 15,000? I mean, this isn't a very old regulation, right?
No, it was based off surrounding localities.
Okay.
So also, interesting enough, we recently got a request from someone who wanted to open a microwinery in a commercial storefront.
Okay.
Using someone else's grapes to make the wine. So apparently that's our next brewery.
Okay. We'll look at that.
Great equalism. Can we put a provision in there that makes this not awful, awful homebrew stuff like most of the people sell? I mean, this stuff.
If it's awful, it won't last very long.
I don't know. I think there's some people that'll drink anything you put in front of them.
I think the delineation's fine.
Okay, even the threshold differences? So again, the old way was breweries were more than 15,000, and a microbrewery was anything less than 15, whereas now we're saying a microbrewery is no more than 1,000. So it's a fraction, what it used to be. I don't think that the brewery so much is what's concerning. I'd say that most that would come here would be between 1,000 and 5,000 barrel capacity. But the microbrewery is, is capping it at 1,000 is a lot different than saying you can go up to 15,000, which is the way it is now. But if no one has come in yet, and as a microbrewery, and said, I'm going to make 12,000 barrels a year, then I.
That's a dumb question, but how big's a barrel? Is it like 55 gallon?
Oh, gosh.
Man, I don't know. Like, I don't know how much, like, really throughput that would be from a standpoint of.
I couldn't tell you that trivia question.
I'm sorry, I don't.
Like a half, I think it's 15 gallons. Is that what that is?
Or Google.
Well, the word barrel is used, you know.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't have it again.
30 gallons, so it's 30 gallons.
31, 31 gallons.
30,000. 30,000 gallons. That sounds fair, right? And so Stephanie, where did that, or Rebecca, where did that language come from? Is that other, or where did that number rather come from?
Those numbers, if I'm remembering right, it's been a while since I've looked. But those numbers, I think, are what are referred in state code, how state code defines some of those. Not that you have to stick to that, but it's always great to have the same sort of measures. And what we have found in terms of where microbreweries are allowed, that size seems to fit a little bit better.
Okay.
Could this potentially limit, I guess, someone who's calling it a microbrewery, but really wants to, I don't know, do like 8,000?
To me, their business name can be whatever their business name is. But when they come to the county and put in their application and say, this is the number of barrels I'm doing, then you guys say, all right, you fit into this use category, you apply for this use permit, and these are the locations that you can do that. And so that would be more my concern is, okay, they're going to do 8,000 barrels. Where are they going to do it? Are they in the right district?
So I know when we originally wrote this, we were wanting breweries to come into the county. It's in our economic strategic plan. I'm not sure that we want to be more restrictive than our surrounding localities, that we want to be competitive.
It's a trade definition, too.
Okay, if you want to leave it as is? Okay.
Yeah, minute is up on this.
What'd you say?
Minute is up on this.
Next. One more thing to call out here that we did change is we suggest allowing microbreweries by right in mixed use. That came in mind bearing the size difference, so knowing that we're going to keep it up to 15,000 barrels for a microbrewery, do you want to take that out of mixed use? Or leave it?
Still such a theoretical. Yeah, I mean, it's so theoretical for us at this point because we don't really have any mixed use.
Okay. All right, so the next one is commercial kennel, which is page... Hold on, scrolling. Maybe 13? Oh, 20, thank you, not 13. Okay, commercial kennels. So what we've changed here is we, in the current definition, it allows for commercial and private kennels. We have changed this to just be a commercial kennel, so something that is in exchange for money, whereas you don't just have four dogs of your own that would constitute a private kennel. So that's one of the big changes here. And then we've also suggested to allow commercial kennels through a special exception in C1, RC, and mixed use. These would have use standards. There are some now. We would keep and update those if needed, and we could add additional thoughts, concerns, questions. We kept the quantity. So in your current definition, you have three or more dogs. We've kept that. We've just essentially taken out the regulation of private kennels that were not for, in exchange for money.
So in the definition, it will, because if it's not listed, it's prohibited.
Correct.
So if we don't list it, are we prohibiting private kennels? Are we allowing it in some form? We certainly have private kennels in King George.
Rebecca, what's your take? Are they people that just have a bunch of dogs, or are they watching them for their neighbors?
So we have people who have hunting dogs or have more than four dogs. And they live in agricultural districts perhaps, and, you know.
Okay.
We, I think the exchange of money is the difference.
Okay.
You know, boarding, kenneling, breeding, et cetera.
Okay, so do we want to keep, keep commercial kennel the way we have it now, whereas we leave it by right in A1, A2, A3, permit it in a couple of extra districts with a special exception, and add a private kennel back in, in the ag districts where it was originally? I could restate that if I do.
Because otherwise, the first thing we're going to do is my neighbor has three dogs outside, and they bark all day long. That should not be a zoning issue. I'm not the dog warden. And we get them now. And we, you know, some people are upset that they're allowed, and some people are understanding that there is no restriction of your personal use.
Okay, so two follow-up questions. When we add private kennel in, right now it's only permitted by right in the ag districts. Do we want to leave it there? Does it need to be anywhere else? Is it coming up?
I don't recall it coming up in residential, okay?
So the other one is, I'm just going to circle back. We've, again, proposed to allow kennel, commercial kennels in C1, RC, and mixed use. Do we want to take that away?
In a special exception.
Okay, yep, that's how we have it now.
I'd say leave it as written.
Okay.
And then I think what I'm hearing also is bring private back.
Correct.
In A1 through it.
Correct, yes. All on board for that?
I have one follow-up question. How, like, doggy daycares are becoming a thing? Is that the same thing for a commercial storefront?
For the kennel?
Mm-hmm.
I would say yes. Would you? And we can add that into the definition.
I think that's a good point.
If we want.
So if I wanted to open up a doggy daycare in Vinnie's Shopping Center, I have to come and get a special exception?
Yes.
Okay.
The way that it's written now.
Okay.
Unless it would make more sense, again, every community's a little bit different, unless it would make more sense to have doggy daycare, its own use, apart from just kennels.
And that could be an interpretation thing, because we also have some other store-related uses in personal service, where people, you know, frequent, and you could, you know, decide that you want to include it in that item.
So if you go to personal services, which is in the commercial section.
Wouldn't personal services be more like grooming?
So that's how the definition has it, it has grooming of animals. But this is an example of how we can, to massage the definition, to give you, the wiggle room staff, to say, instead of it being a kennel with all of those kennel-esque standards, because it will have use standards. And if it's more or less a storefront, you have 10 dogs coming in for the day, you know, or overnight, but they're not running outside all day.
Or is it included in a daycare facility? Or is it included in a daycare facility?
What was it?
Or could it be included in a daycare facility?
The.
Well, I guess they have state standard.
Yeah, and I, it would, we would have to say animal. I think we say adult, kids. We specify people.
I think it could fit in your personal services here. We give the example of grooming of pets. We could further that to give the example of, and, you know, daycare facility for pets, or.
Would you feel more comfortable if it was, it was put in somewhere like a storefront personal services? Or would you rather a daycare be more like a kennel? I guess that's the ultimate question. Because a kennel will have use standards and this personal services won't. So hours, um, maybe how many dogs could be out there, size.
Which, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm going back to like sanitation and, you know, the, the dog well-being and stuff. So which one would cut, which one would help the kennel?
Kennel. That would be in the use standards.
I think so, if the animal is better protected, you know.
Yeah, that's how I see it, too, just expand the definition of.
Okay.
So you want a dog daycare for special exception, and that only says C1, not C2.
I think what we did is no C2. But again, I feel like I tell you all this every time we meet. You all know better than us since you live here. So if it would make sense.
Well, if it's permitted in C1, it would be permitted in C2, is how we currently do it. You can't even find it anymore.
Oh, here we go.
So if we open up doggy daycare next to Vinnie's, do we have to worry about noise, barking? Outdoor, I mean, assume that they have all indoor play, not outdoor play? We're going down a rabbit hole, but I think some things to consider. We'll leave it to you ladies, I guess. Could it?
But it would still be a special exception, right?
Special exception. So you could, you know, put those standards on when they come and apply.
So I think there would be some food quality concerns there. I can't do it.
Okay, is it safe to say special exception?
Yeah.
Okay, C1 and C2. Are we okay with resort community and mixed use, having this as a special exception?
I could see it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any other changes to this one? Okay, we're almost there. So these three, and then we're gonna get to solar, and then we're done. So adult use, page. So adult use is one of those things that you want to include to avoid lawsuits. You want to find one place to allow it with the most control that you can. It's on page twenty-five. So what we have proposed is that you allow it in C1 through a special exception. Um, and it would also have use standards, which would really hone in on, it has to be a certain distance from schools.
Oh, that kind of.
Other adult businesses.
All right, I was going back to the adult daycare again. That's not what we're talking about. Sorry.
So the, the way that you write your standards here is that you hopefully end up with one and no more. You, you do it, so again, it's a certain distance from schools. It would be a certain distance from other adult uses, so that again, you ultimately end up with one if any, especially by only allowing it in one district. It would have hours of operations in the standard, so it's not open all night.
But we don't have anything for it right now.
No.
So going back to Heather's earlier comment, if it's not in there, then it's not allowed, right?
Correct.
We do have a sexually oriented business, uh, section, compliments of Mr. Britton.
In your standards? Okay, yeah. In those standards, does it say it's allowed anywhere, or it just has standards?
There were standards, and there was proximity, and it was, so it could only exist like in a flooded abandoned gravel pit.
Okay.
Mr. Britton made it very, uh, difficult.
We just tell people to go on the internet now, don't we?
So then the way that we've done this is just to round out that idea of, of saying that it's allowed as a use, but we can look at those standards that are in there now and try to take a crayon and map out what those words say, and then whatever it was pointing to. If it, I imagine it may be B C1, but let's say it ends up being C2, we'll change it to that. And it would just match what your standards say now.
I thought it was light industrial.
Okay.
But I'm not sure.
So.
It's something crazy like that, yeah.
This is the same thing though, right? If it's in C, special exception, C1 would be special exception, C2, right?
That's our current ordinances. I'm looking at this, that's changed with.
That's changed.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's not the case anymore unless you all want it to be that way, but we've taken it from a layered version, so that they're all treated individually.
Okay.
So someone doesn't have to, you know, to know that little nuance of if it's allowed in C1, it's, it's allowed in C2, we're gonna treat each one separately, which is part of the beauty of seeing every district together in this matrix.
Yeah, Article twelve.
Okay.
It has five different sections.
Okay. And were those drafted recently?
No.
Prob- okay.
Two thousand and eight.
Okay.
I seem to know an awful lot about it.
We'll take a look.
When, when we're not on record, I'll tell you a funny story about Jack Green and Matt Britton and twenty-year-old Heather having to go around businesses.
Um, on, then I feel like it's safe to move on from that one.
Right.
Okay, um, the next one we wanna bring up is something that's becoming popular. It has been over the last few years, not just in Virginia, but, but everywhere, and so you wanna find a way to regulate it. Our food trucks, mobile restaurants. Just to cut to the chase here, I think the biggest concern with most localities is, is it going to, um, is it going to hurt the brick and mortar restaurants? The use standards can regulate the hours that it's open, where it can be, how many days in a row. It can be in a certain parking lot. It has to be, you know, two thousand feet from any restaurant door. It has a lot of, you, you can add a lot of standards in there to help it, um, not hurt restaurants that are brick and mortar. I don't know of any actual evidence that they do, but I'm one person. But just to go ahead and cut to the chase on that, that's, I think, the biggest concern that we see is, what's it gonna do to our restaurants? So those use standards can be in place for that. We have suggested to allow that by right in C1, C2, industrial light, industrial, resort community, and mixed use. Questions, comments, concerns, thoughts?
So I will say that when you parse out all the complaints that you get about regular subdivision issues or development, the, the most common thing that people will call me about is food trucks. When can we get food trucks? So just wondering, um, for larger subdivisions that are like A2, would we not wanna put them in there as well, or?
I, I, I have that same question. Hopyard, which we keep using as an example. They have a big, beautiful clubhouse, plenty of parking. They're on the opposite end of the county that doesn't have any restaurants. You know, they, they have appetite to have food trucks there.
I think.
Same thing with, I, I think, um, a few other neighborhoods as well.
And what about businesses that are in agriculture, but they're a business, like a, a winery that likes to have food trucks come or something?
Right, or breweries. It's a boon of the breweries, too.
Yep.
Man, I think if we write it tight, I don't know that there'd be a problem. I mean, unless, some, again, unless I'm not seeing it, I don't know that there'd be a problem with it really anywhere.
Especially the ice cream truck.
Right.
Since man's.
So do we wanna add?
So sad.
Sorry, Heather. By right in ag, all ags, some residentials, all residentials? And also, they have to have their VDH permits and all of those other things.
Some serve and all that stuff, yeah.
I, I think if you have them in neighborhoods, it has to have, you know, you can't just park in a cul-de-sac and open up shop. I think you need a space, um, that you can safely serve patrons, such as, you know, Hopyard has parking, has, um, a space to pull in off of a road.
If those standards were in place, would it be amenable to put them in by right in ag and residential?
I wouldn't think so.
No?
Okay, is there like a non-compete, like I can't open up and sell pizza in front of Pizza Bono? I mean, that's how they hurt brick and mortar companies.
Lots of ordinances, I've seen, they regulate how close you are to an existing restaurant. There's also, um, in lots of places of, like rigorous food truck permit, where you would list all the places that, um, you're allowed to be. The owner says you can be there, and those are reviewed, and those are the areas you're allowed to be. Of course, you can add places, um, as you go, but.
Cause before, you know, we would have people pull over at three and three oh one in an abandoned lot and barely get off the main road, and we'd have to chase them away on Memorial Day weekend because they're selling barbecue, right? I don't think that those are the kinds of food trucks we wanna have. We wanna make sure that they can get off the highways safely, they're not hurting other businesses, things like that. And they're using land properly, not just because it's, looks like nobody visits their property that they own often.
Yeah, I imagine you have to seek permission from someone to park somewhere, right?
And that can be in the use standards. Okay. I feel like we're good on that one. Anybody?
Did we say all districts?
Like all districts by right.
We're opening it up, okay.
Okay. All right, next one is just below this, indoor shooting range. This one came straight out of public engagement. We heard specifically no outdoor gun ranges, but we'd like to see an indoor. So this, of course, would have some standards for noise, hours of operation. We have suggested as a starting point for discussion, special exception for all of the districts I'm about to say. So nothing is by right. A2, C1, C2, industrial light, and industrial. Again, thoughts, concerns?
What's the thought on A2?
I think it was trying to put it in, in a, something that's not commercial or industrial, but that would offer distance, space, that sort of thing. Again, I know I say it all the time. You all know more than we do. If you know that it wouldn't, it's easy enough to justify taking it away.
So the conversation with indoor versus outdoor is we often get interest and calls about outdoor shooting facilities. In fact, we turned one down today because we were unable to permit it under our current ordinance.
Well, there's a lot of, right, I mean, we've, we've, we've lived through that too, right? And I, I don't know that there's gonna be, I think as we grow as a county, and the density inevitably becomes more pronounced, I don't know that there's gonna ever be another appetite for an outdoor shooting range in King George County, right? I just, I mean, you know, we, we, we've dealt with that, and then it didn't go well. And it wasn't the best presentation either, but I don't know that anybody could, may have, could have sold that, because it just.
I just wanted to make sure you have all of the information. You know, what we're seeing coming through the office, not, the workshops are great, but they're a couple hundred, not thousands, of people that we serve every day.
I live on Round Hill, and I think, I think they have their own outdoor range in the backyard a lot of times. I'm with you.
Now, those, those are private. Those are not, you know, I can't pay you to come, and yeah.
Is there an immediate gut reaction to indoor shooting ranges? Again, it goes without saying, you don't have to have this in there?
Not in commercial or industrial personally for me. The ag one, I don't know.
Okay.
I'd back it out of A2.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that. It just seems out of place.
Okay, seems consensus on that.
I, cause I think it would give, things are pretty well regulated in commercial and industrial. You get somebody out in, in, in A2, I think you could, I think you could slack on a lot of the noise suppression things and safety.
I think it just lends itself to, to, to lack of oversight.
Right, put it with the brewery.
Okay, so take it out of A2, leave as a special exception in commercial and industrial? Okay. All right, the next one, it should be the last page or the second to last page. We're gonna just quickly talk about solar. So what you all currently have now is utility scale solar. You all call it solar farm. There was no megawatt cap in your current definition. Your current definition is an area of land designated for the purpose of producing electricity from photovoltaics. There may be a size in the standards, I don't know for sure. But what we've suggested is to break out solar into three levels. You would have solar energy, utility, medium, and small scale. Small scale, when you think of it, would be something on your roof or something for onsite consumption that's not serving many people. We have it capped at one megawatt. Medium scale is capped at less than five megawatts. And then your utility scale would be greater than five megawatts. Another differentiation here between small and medium and utility is that the way we've drafted this and what we're seeing throughout the state now is that utility scale is to be sent for commercial consumption. Small scale and medium scale can be for a range, onsite consumption, sent to a cooperative, or commercial consumption. A cooperative would be within the community. It's sent to the cooperative that, that takes that generated solar and sells it to people in King George. You have to buy into those. So the only one here, the way we've drafted it, that could go out for commercial consumption, it would be generated here in King George, but maybe never serves people in King George, would be the utility scale. The next piece of the puzzle here is we've suggested that small scale is by right in all districts. Medium scale is that middle ground. You would need a special exception in A1, A2, C1, C2, resort community, mixed use. By right in industrial districts. And then we have left your utility scale as is, which you require a special exception in A1 and A2, and it's by right in industrial. So we've tried to create a bit of a layering effect here, a step.
You, you get your, your numbers as far as, uh, your scale numbers. They came from a consensus throughout the state?
Correct.
And you don't know if there's a regulation right now by the state?
Talk about size?
So the size tends to get into, um, your taxes and how much money you would get. And, and that's when those come into play. The sizes here really have been created by a couple of things. One, sort of industry standard and demand in terms of what an individual might put on their piece of property to, to run their home or their farm, or, you know, those types of things. Or like the medium scale, um, in industrial or commercial rooftops, you could get up to that, that five megawatt. So it's sort of by the panels, how much they produce, and what communities have found to be more intrusive. So those two pieces kind of work out those numbers.
So it wasn't, it wasn't, you just pulled from the air? There was a lot of research?
No, there, there's a little bit of magic, but not an exact magic.
Okay, all right. Um, can we put aesthetic things in there? Like, so for instance, if you got on the smaller scale one, like you got a neighbor that doesn't like to cut their ass, so they just layer the whole yard with solar panels. Can we like prohibit, you know, how you do that? Or is that, is that, do you see that anywhere, or?
So the, so the megawatts would limit in terms of, you know, being able to do so much. I mean, they still could do quite a bit if they've got a small yard, yeah, put out a bunch of solar panels. But there still would be standards with these as well, that we would say, you know, you have to screen from view and, you know, different things like that as well.
Okay, well.
So the small scale is, um, that the excess energy is purchased back or sold to the, um, electric company, like net metering, right?
Yes, yes, you can do that.
Those, those are like.
All and medium, you can do that.
Right, your rooftops, where they put them on the roof and it's.
Or ground, yeah.
Yeah, or the ground, yeah.
They could be either or.
Okay.
Utility scale would only be on the ground. Utility scale would only be on the ground.
So there are other restrictions from the utility companies as well, so we can only do net metering. So that'll drive some of this even outside of King George County.
Right. Other thoughts? Or do we want to keep?
Keep it so.
We're so close.
Hold on, you said that was it?
Are we done? We want to leave these the way they are? Oh, great. Okay, yeah, we're done. Okay, um, so the next one is July twenty sixth. That's going to be the use standards. You'll get these revisions for your, I'm drawing a blank right now, your July twelfth meeting. And when we come back to you with you in July to go over the use standards, we'll bring the revised matrix so that you can see them side by side. They go hand in hand. And it's nice to do them together. Just our schedule didn't work out that way. So you'll have this again with the use standards. Just so you know. Other than that, same thing as always.
And if you don't get a packet at least one week before something is wrong, please let us know.
I thought, I thought it was part of the, what you'd sent out on the tenth. So that's what I was looking at. I was like, what is this table they keep referring?
Yeah, he, he forwarded you the email. You still didn't get it? I'm one.
You can just leave, huh?
That's right. Sorry. All right, so hold on. Here we go. Rebecca, Stephanie, we, we're good? All right, so I'm going to move on to the next agenda item, which is new business. No new business to be had. I'm going to move on to the director's report. There's no director's report tonight. I'm going to move on to other business. There's no other business to be had, so I'm going to move on to the next item, which is a favorite part of the evening, adjournment. I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made and seconded all in favor. Motion passes. Have a good evening, everybody. Thank you.